Carlos Maruho and we have Counselor Matthew Chapel to say the pledge of allegiance if he doesn't have a conflict of interest or something and want to step away from it. He sure seems to step away from a lot of votes now lately.
That is a federal flag.
Yes, it is a federal flag. Okay, yeah, as soon as it gets to sixty, we'll get there. Want to do a prayer first? Okay, we'll have a prayer tonight by Counselor Maruho and a pledge by Counselor Chapel and then we'll have roll call by our clerk. Counselor Maruho.
Father, we come before you and give you all glory and honor, Father. We thank you for the day you let us come in here today, Father God. I ask you to give us the wisdom, Father God, in our decisions today. Father God, I lift up Counselor Ortesa's wife to you today, Father God, and to the zeal we lift up in our prayers, Father God. I ask for protection over our military, our police officers, our first responders, our firefighters, Father God, our city officials, Father God. We give you all the glory and honor. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Corn. I guess you're present. Counselor Moore. Counselor Halverson.
Here.
Counselor Heldenbrand.
Present.
Counselor Arnold will be here in just a minute. Counselor Chapel.
Here.
Counselor Cabin. Counselor Ortesa is absent. Carlos, Counselor Maruho.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we'll have, we're on the agenda, we will have, we'll have to move to approve the agenda. We have here under public participation on the, should be non-agenda items and the agenda items will be held, the public participation will be held when we get to that particular ordinance there, that we will talk about those two regular items. We will have participation there on those if that's agreeable with everyone. Oh, somebody's fashionably late, I mean fashionably almost on time. Yes, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the agenda for the September thirty, twenty twenty four special city council meeting.
A motion by Counselor Hildebrand, second by Counselor Cabin and if clerk could call the roll.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Corn. Counselor Moore. Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand. Counselor Arnold. Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin. Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, what was the vote? How many?
Nine to zero.
Nine, nine, okay. Okay, so then moving right along, do we have public participation on the non-agenda items? Looks like here, I don't have, well, some put their address on the wrong line and so we don't know whether, what they're here for. Is there anyone that wants to speak on something other than the water issues or the bleachers? Is there anyone here who wants to speak on something other than water issues or the bleachers? Seeing none, this list I have will all be people that we hope to hear from. If, for the water issues, I would, I would ask that we wait on any public participation until you hear the proposal that has been put together after our public hearing that we had on just water rights issues. And I think this will solve most of your questions about where we are and what we can do to fix the, the first water rights project that we had out. I think this is a lot more favorable and to, to everybody and we do not have the tiered system in as we know it, as we knew it, where it doubles the rates. So we will get to that and we'll have Counselor Cole and Counselor, and Counselor Intima will tell us about that amendment and the, there is a proposed amendment to the, the third item on today's agenda. So, okay, seeing that there's no non-agenda items, we will go to item two, the approved sturdy steel proposal for construction. Counselman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I move that we approve the sturdy steel proposal for constructing grandstands at the Roswell Air Center.
Second.
Let me find it. Somebody forgot my tabs. Okay, okay, it was on a motion by Counselman Hildebrand, second by Counselor, Counselor Cabin to approve the sturdy steel proposal for construction of grandstands at the Roswell Air Center. Counselman, or Counselor Intima.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, thank you. Just a slight correction, this is technically a ratification per the council's earlier instruction. But in any case, I'm happy to report that we have a contract with sturdy steel. We've dealt with the Reno air races and they had a consultation rate. They consulted, acquiesced to all the terms of the contract, which from legal's perspective is very beneficial because it limits our liability for any delays. The, there is a slightly later foundation pouring and as a result, grandstand finishing, that allows the city additional time to electrify the area and put in any additional water if FAA requires it for, well, emergencies. Similarly, the liquidated damages provision is not as high as initially imposed, but after a little research, at five thousand dollars a day, that is the highest liquidated damages that the city's ever imposed on a contractor. So it's sufficient enough to light a fire under most anybody. In any case, the, the final total would be three million thirty-eight thousand one hundred nineteen and fifteen cents. This is all paid for with state appropriations that were earmarked for the airport. They could not be used elsewhere. No general fund money and no enterprise money is used.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, anyone in the audience here to speak about the sturdy steel contract on the bleachers? Seeing none. Counselors, any questions from members of the council? Seeing none, pardon? Well, it's not up. Oh, excuse me. Counselor Chapel, I remember this is kind of like.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to abstain due to unemployment.
Counselor, is there any objection to Counselor Chapel being allowed to abstain from voting on this because of his employment? Seeing none, it shall be granted. Okay, any further questions on the bleachers? Counselman Hildebrand.
Mr. Cole, is this, or whomever, the GRT, will we pay GRT on, on the materials as well as for the labor? Or is, are the materials exempt?
Mayor Protem Hildenbrand, some materials would be exempt from GRT.
Well, the GRT would be less than what the proposal.
Likely.
It will come underneath the three hundred thousand, or three million.
Three million.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Matt, Mr. Matt came up behind you. Mr. Cole, if there's anything you would like to add, Mac, it's all right.
Nothing to add, sir. Mr. Cole clarified the issue.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? If the clerk could call the roll. Do, this is to ratify the sturdy steel proposal for constructing the grandstands at the Roswell Air Center, item two in our agenda. The clerk could please call the roll.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand. Counselor Arnold.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin. Counselor Maruho.
Yes.
I have a vote of nine in the affirmative, none in the negative, with one abstention. Item two is duly passed the, the council. Okay, moving right along. Okay. Oh, where's this end? Okay, next we will go to item three on today's general ordinance twenty-four dash twelve. And this will be a, okay, okay, this will be, for ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, to hold a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance twenty-four dash twelve and amending chapter twenty-six regarding the water rates as it, as it reads in ordinance twenty-four dash oh five. Counselman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, amending chapter twenty-six regarding water rates as it reads in ordinance twenty-four dash zero five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselman Hildebrand, seconded by Counselor Lady Halverson. Okay, okay, so, Councilman, or City Manager, please begin.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Jennings, members of the council. You have a rates presentation here in front of you in consideration of proposed ordinance twenty-four dash twelve utility rates for the city of Roswell. What I'd like to point out to you on this first slide is the New Mexico Drinking Water Bureau's twenty-two twenty-three Public Water and Wastewater User Charge Survey for, for December of twenty-two. And I'll just tell you, the December of twenty-three survey has not been issued and made public yet. But if you look at the second from the last there, you'll see Roswell Municipal Water System. And you'll see that the residential rate, of course, this survey anticipates the rate for every six thousand gallons. And so while our rates aren't necessarily set up for six thousand gallon increments, the survey anticipates everybody's rates equally at six thousand gallons. So twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents, the rate for water residential, that's greater than five thousand connections. And then if we go to the next slide, what I'd like to point out is the average rate for residential water with greater than five thousand connections throughout the state of New Mexico. That's forty dollars and fifty-seven cents. So you can see what our former water superintendent was attempting to do with the tiered rate structure that was introduced for July. And this next slide, looking at the Roswell versus New Mexico average and the variance. And of course, we can see there's a variance of fifty-six point four percent on water. When we look at sewer, there's a variance between Roswell and the New Mexico average of a hundred and twenty-two point three eight percent. So again, as we look at the rates tables, as they were constructed for this tiered rate that we are currently under with the, the last ordinance that increased the rates, that is what he was trying to achieve, I believe. So looking at this first rate table, you've got the old rate over in the left-hand column and it starts out with the base rate or what is sometimes referred to as an access rate. And you can see in the right-hand column of that first table, the rate percentage increase. So the first one at three-quarter line size went from nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents, increased by seven dollars and twenty-seven cents for a total rate increase on the base of thirty-seven percent. And then, of course, you can go down the line there and see that. As we move over to the consumption rate, where it's labeled at the top, the old rate of two dollars and forty-three cents. Now, that's the old rate that was applied flat across all tiers. When we move to the tiered rate as presented and approved under the former water superintendent, you can see that each tier goes up and you can see the percentage increase over the old flat rate of two dollars and forty-three cents. So sixteen percent, tier one, forty percent, tier two, sixty-three percent, tier three, eighty-six percent, tier four, and a hundred and nine percent, tier five, and anything over eighteen thousand gallons was a hundred and thirty-three percent. So I will tell you that the flaw, or a flaw, in going too fast, too far, too soon, was in introducing a tiered rate structure from a flat rate structure in the middle of July, which is peak consumption for Roswell, New Mexico. And so that was obvious and plain. And certainly if we go down to the table just below that on consumption, again, wastewater is based in part on consumption. And you can see under the residential inside Roswell rates that wastewater was increased to a hundred and twenty-three percent. And if you look down the table, you can see that on commercial, large, two hundred and fifty-three percent. Again, this was too far, too fast, in many people's opinions throughout the community. But I think that's a big jump to go from a flat rate to a tiered structure with that kind of consumption in July. And I'll just tell you, the average consumption for July was over sixteen thousand gallons. If we go to the next table, you can see the outside rate. You'll notice that, that there is no wastewater table in this rate table. And that is because we don't have wastewater services that are outside of the city. Similarly, we don't have sanitation or trash pickup outside the city. Moving to the next slide, just took an average of the base amount billed or what was called the access fee billed for water and looked at the consumption billed for water, looked at all of fiscal year twenty-four or FY twenty-three, twenty-four, and then looked at July and August all the way to your right. That's year-to-date twenty-four, twenty-five, the current fiscal year that we're in. And you can certainly see the spike in both the base billed rate and the consumption billed rate, and of course, the total combined. Moving to the next slide, we can see a comparison of July consumption and August consumption and billed. So July is when the new rates went into effect, August is when they were billed. And you can certainly see the spike in the base rate and you, even though consumption went down slightly. So the top line consumed gallons, total consumed gallons, went down slightly. Billed base rate billed went up slightly. Again, that's for the, based on the increase to the excess rate or the base rate. Consumption billed went up dramatically. And again, that was moving from the old flat rate structure of two dollars and forty-three cents to the new tiered rate with different tiers all along there, with it maxing out at eighteen thousand gallons in the top tier, which was more than double the old flat rate introduced in July, peak, peak season. So what you can see there is the mean average consumed gallons during July, which was billed, was sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-one gallons, the average customer. Moving to the next slide, took an average of prior year fiscal year, July to June, which was twelve thousand thirty-four gallons for the average consumer. And then, of course, we looked at July, sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-one gallons. And we could see the average base billed versus the average consumption billed and the, the spike again occurring on July consumption. Moving to the next slide, you know, it's very difficult when you want to make the community whole from an aggressive rate structure, when you're trying to compare apples to oranges or a flat rate to a tiered rate. So really what we have to do is we need to look at July consumption and August consumption and the, the billed amount. And we need to see or determine what is the cost per gallon in July versus what is the cost per gallon in August. And so if you go down and look there in the first table, where it says factor cost per gallon, point zero zero two one cents. And again, we use the July average consumption of sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-one gallons consumed by the average customer. And it comes out to point zero zero two one cents per gallon. We compare that to what was billed in August based on July consumption, again, using that same average consumption amount. And it was point zero zero four cents per gallon. We can see the dollar variance in cost per gallon is point one nine. And we can see the wastewater cost average consumer is thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. And again, that's the real increase or impact on the customer versus above total consume billed of eighty-five point six seven percent. When you convert it into gallons and compare it, it's actually an increase of eighty-eight point seventy-nine percent. And so we're looking for the best fit in terms of how do we make our community whole again? How do we discount or potentially propose discount to the water rates that can make our community whole again? And you could see that the differential of thirty-one dollars and fifty-two cents is what we attempt to do, actually what we do in this model. I've just taken the rate structures and modeled it out again against that sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-one gallons, as you'll see soon. Moving on to the next slide, again, we can see the cost per gallon in July was point two, point zero zero two one cents, cost per gallon in August, point zero zero four, the differential of point one nine, or point zero zero one nine. And again, the differential in the total rate of thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. the differential in the total rate of thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents when you compare the old flat rate versus the tiered rate discounting conversion factor model for average Uh, we can see that the discount assumes no change to the old base rate access fee, uh, meaning we stay flat on the base rate of nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents prior to the tier and the base rates increase introduction. Uh, we can see the old flat rate prior to ordinance twenty-four dash oh five was two dollars and forty-three cents, as we've discussed. The discount assumes a ninety-three percent rate reduction over the old flat rate, the old flat rate, previous rate of two dollars and forty-three cents, for the month of October only. That would be two dollars and twenty-seven cents. We take the difference of those two, and it's point one six, or sixteen cents, for October, and that is what is being proposed, as we'll see. Uh, discounting the spread, uh, between, we can see the old flat rate, again, was two dollars and forty-three cents, less the discounted rate for the month of October, sixteen cents as proposed, um, gets us to two dollars and twenty-seven cents total discount from the old flat rate, uh, to make our citizens whole. Uh, moving down, the proposed new flat rate of three dollars and sixty-five cents, less the old flat rate of two dollars and forty-three cents yields a difference of one point two two. Combining the total discount from the old flat rate to the total variance from the old and new flat rates being proposed is three dollars and forty-three cents. If we take that three dollars and forty-three cents, and we divide that by five months, uh, for implementation, as opposed to implementing during peak watering season in the middle of July, uh, we can see that it's a seventy dol, or seventy cent change per month. And again, we are giving, applying a heavy discount in this proposal to the first month in October next month. You can see what the rate would be in the, the table just below the seventy cents. Uh, October of twenty twenty-four rate after first three thousand gallons of sixteen cents, flat all the way across. November goes up seventy cents to a dollar three, again, less than two dollars and forty-three cents, it's discounted. December, uh, goes up to a dollar ninety, uh, another seventy cents, still discounted below the old flat rate of two dollars and forty-three cents, and it's not until January, uh, that we actually reached the two dollars and forty-three cents and slightly exceeded at two dollars and seventy-eight cents. For February, another seventy cents, uh, would get us to three dollars and sixty-five cents. Going to the next slide, you can see the prior fiscal year, uh, consumption in gallons, uh, and again, we've talked about this inverted bell curve, uh, as the incremental, as the new rate is incrementally distributed, October through February, consumption actually decreases. Moving on to the next slide, this slide illustrates or maps out and models, uh, under the old, uh, or the new versus old rate structure. And so we can see the old flat rates, uh, that's highlighted in yellow, uh, to your right, and then in the light blue is the modeled flat rates that are being proposed tonight. And you can see over in that far right-hand column, as you look at dollar increased build, right next to percentage increase build, where it's highlighted at thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. Again, that's our targeted factor differential, uh, to make the community whole by discounting by ninety-three percent. If we shift over and look towards the left at the rates table, again, we can see that we've gone back to the old base rate of nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents for a three-quarter inch line, uh, that's a zero percent increase for the month of October. That's the only way to model that out and get to this thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents, uh, with a discount on the tiered rate, uh, combined with the access or base rate. And again, you can see we're discounting the consumption or, uh, flat rate on consumption by ninety-three percent for October. You can also see that we're modeling, uh, reverting to the old flat rate plus a fifty percent increase on wastewater. Uh, I think you can recall from just a few slides ago, it was a hundred and twenty-three percent increase, uh, this anticipates fifty percent. Again, uh, heavily discounted on the water in October. The next slide is the actual rate table, uh, for the month of October. And again, you can see that illustrated in the rate table, uh, zero on the base access rate, uh, ninety-three percent discount on water residential inside the city of Roswell, um, going from a hundred and twenty-three percent increase on wastewater to a fifty percent flat increase on wastewater. And then proceeding down, small commercial reflects the same as residential inside the city, and you can see that large commercial, uh, inside the city, uh, is very similar, uh, reflects the same ninety-three percent discount, uh, for October. And again, wastewater at fifty percent versus, I believe it was two twenty-three increase on the, the tiered rate proposal or current. Moving forward, um, the next month is November, uh, twenty twenty-four modeled, uh, and again, you can see the discount of fifty-eight percent on water versus a fifty percent as opposed to a hundred and twenty-three percent on wastewater. Again, we're just looking at residential for simplification purposes, but this would flow all the way down in the table. Moving to the November table, you can see the same thing reflected. Going to the December model, uh, as the red formula-driven modeling, you can see the discount of twenty-one percent on water versus a fifty percent increase on wastewater. Again, uh, less than a hundred and twenty-three percent as it currently stands under the tiered structure, and you can see the impact and the difference, uh, between the old flat rate versus the modified proposed. Moving on to December rate table, same thing illustrated. Going to the January rate modeled, the next slide, you can see that we've finally, uh, hit a fourteen percent increase, uh, to the consumption model in January. Uh, again, wastewater staying the same at fifty percent. Moving to the January rate table, you can see the same thing, fourteen percent and fifty percent. Moving to the February model, we can see, uh, we've gone up, and I'll call this, uh, proposed final February rate model, uh, twenty twenty-five. And you can see, uh, that we've gone from an access fee, uh, that was for a three-quarter inch line under the current tiered rates as passed in ordinance, uh, twenty-four dash five, uh, it was a thirty-seven percent increase. You can see it's a twenty percent increase all the way down the column on the base rate. And again, you can see consumption, uh, after the first three thousand gallons, going from an old rate of two dollars and forty-three cents to a new rate of three dollars and sixty-five cents, again, a fifty percent increase. And you can see what that does in the model itself, comparing the old flat rate to the modified rates, uh, for residential. Moving to the next slide is the table. And then moving to the final slide is the table for outside rates. Again, have removed wastewater from this table as wastewater does not apply to the outside, neither does trash pickup. Um, again, uh, keeping this flat, uh, across the board, and you can see, uh, where it says, if you look on the, the right-hand table underwater residential after first three thousand gallons, uh, you've got the old rate of four dollars and sixty-four cents, moving to the new flat rate of four dollars and forty-six cents. Again, this is outside the city, uh, and look right underneath the four dollars and sixty-four cents versus the inside rate. So we're not looking at a two hundred percent, uh, on the outside rate, we're looking at a fifty percent over the proposed inside rate under this proposal. You also have, uh, there in front of you, um, two tables. One is the old flat rate prior to, uh, ordinance twenty-four dash five, um, with the new tiered rate as it currently stands in the ordinance, uh, right now. And then the second, uh, page at the top says the proposed flat rate or ordinance twenty-four dash twelve, again, uh, confirming the final February rate, uh, moving forward under this proposal, a twenty percent increase to the base rate, a fifty percent increase to the consumption rate, and a fifty percent increase to the wastewater rate over the old flat Council members, you also have in front of you an, an analysis, uh, done by, uh, one of our council members, our mayor Pro Tem, he did his homework, uh, and you can see, uh, the targets, uh, that we are looking at. And of course, you know that, uh, part of the issue is we have a master plan for pipe replacement, critical pipe replacement. The unfortunate thing is this city hasn't had the budget to do anything other than emergency repairs from one year to the next. Now, we can certainly go back in history, uh, recent history, recent years, and look to where the enterprise fund for both wastewater and water were rated, uh, via the administrative cost function, uh, meaning they administrative, they applied administrative costs at a rate that pulled those monies out and were transferred into the general fund and expended. That illustrates part of this city's problem. We've been Robin Peter to pave Paul for quite some time. The problem is, when you do that, and you're underwater, and you can't cover your operating costs, you can't cover the cost of what it costs us to deliver that water, um, to the customer, then you've got a problem, uh, you've got a revenue problem. And if alls we're doing is treading water, uh, by replacing emergency blowouts, whether it's up and down Montana, we've seen the recent blowouts that have occurred, we know that, uh, the baseball fields had a blowout, I believe it was year before last, maybe last year, um, you know, that's two to three million dollars a pop in emergency repairs, uh, annually. Um, so if we're ever gonna go with a plan, initiate a new plan, we have to have the revenues to do that plan. Um, and so that is what's anticipated in this proposal as well. Uh, the second page is for wastewater, and again, if you look at that highlighted percentage of revenue, uh, you can see what we're trying to target there. I think a hundred and twenty-three percent increase on residential wastewater was a little excessive, but again, understanding who developed these rates, what their incentives and motivation was, and knowing that these rates and this council is committed to putting those revenues in those enterprise funds and not stealing from it. I understood that, um, so with that, I'd certainly take any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Cole, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I would like the audience to know some things, what, we have to come to a decision tonight. If we don't come to a decision tonight, this topic can't not be brought up according to state statutes for six months. It can't, so we have to come to an agreement tonight. And, uh, so I would just tell you some things that a lot of people don't know. Uh, when the past councils before, uh, this council was elected, or one, uh, two years ago was elected, or three years, there have been at least two rate increases that the city had proposed and never adopted. There were at least two rate increases that they've, that the past councils in the past ignored, and that's one of the things that got us into a problem. Last year, we lost four point seven million dollars in water alone. Now, what did that do? Because we have to make that whole, all the four enterprise funds have, are self-sufficient. It means they pay for themselves all the way through improvements, costs of salaries, all that is paid. When we had to take four point seven million dollars out of the rest of the budget, that came from police, fire, uh, emergency personnel, and administration. That's why the policeman, when the state gave a fifteen percent raise to all the state police, who were their prime targets? The Roswell Police Department and other city departments, because we couldn't match. We could only give our employees a one percent raise. The fire department, when Eddie County, we had seventeen or whatever it was, new firemen, or fourteen or seventeen come through, so Eddie County, which they have all the oil money and everything else, for their volunteer firemen, they paid them. Where did they come and get their firemen? From the Roswell Police Department or Roswell Fire Department. So we had employees that we had invested, you know, a whole thousands of dollars in training, that all of a sudden were gone, because the past council never kept the water rates up to current. When we have the water tanks out there that were leaking out on, on, on Country Club, been leaking since two thousand and eleven, and never repaired. There's fifteen million gallons out there. You look at the cast iron pipe that's in here right now, we have eight hundred and fifty thousand feet, a hundred and sixty miles of cast iron pipe that has forty years useful life, is what they predicted when they put it in. It's been in for eighty to eighty-five years, and we're having, starting to have some major leaks. That's in the water side. You know what else is cast iron pipe? The sewers. So you know what the cast iron pipes that are sewers? You know what's happened to them? They're have, you know, sulfuric acid going down those lines, and they eat the cast iron out faster than the fresh water does. So we have a huge problem with all the waste department stuff we have, because when that leaks, it doesn't, it's not under pressure, so it tends to soak in the ground. But it's still, we have to get that water we can, uh, because the streets fall in, the, the sewer lines are generally underneath the water lines as far as in a depth, so they cost a lot more to, uh, to fix. You know, the, uh, the city, we just got here, and we have to look on why we had to go to at least a fifty percent. It takes, it takes at least a thirty percent increase just to make us where we balance our utility budget. But we need twenty percent more so we can come up with plans to go to the federal government after the base left here and walked out the door and left everything here to us. You know, we had, you know, all the, the, all the billing was done on the cast iron pipe between nineteen forty and forty-five, it's when they built the base. We have got to go and have a plan to go to Washington to tell them, we don't need a little bit of money, we got a hundred and sixty miles of pipe, we need hundreds of millions of dollars, and we're not even talking about wastewater yet. And, uh, we did three point nine miles of, of, uh, pipe, you know, we did three-quarters of a mile of pipe in a plan that we have to replace, and there's a million, three-hundred thousand dollars per mile, or per quarter mile. So it's three point nine million dollars to do three-quarters of a mile of cat, of, of big pipe. We have some extremely large issues to, that we have to address, and... And this is not something that we did crazy or anything else. These pipes, the cast iron pipes, we had one up here before. They were half inch thick when it started. It was six hundredths of an inch thick when it blew out. And that cast iron piece of pipes on the, on the, in the floor, when you come up and go into City Hall, it's right there on display. We have some extremely significant issues that must be addressed quickly. And I, this council hadn't, we haven't been taking money out of water funds and building swimming pools or anything with it. We haven't done that. We're just trying to figure out how to make our budget work. But we can't, if we don't have water, we have a real problem. And you look at our employees, you can think our employees are overpaid. Oh, look, we have people with CDLs getting $18 an hour. You can go to Carlsbad or Artesian, get $28 an hour, just like that. If you have a CDL license driving things. So we have some real problems. And when we, when we did our water tank out here, we were lucky because they bid, they told us was $8 million to fix that tank. We got a company from Minnesota that offered to go through and go, you gotta drain one of those big seven and a half million gallon tanks, fix it, go into the inside, patch it, everything else, and then recoat it on the inside. We got them to do it. The bid was like almost $4 million. We saved half because the people can't work in Minnesota when it's that cold, but it's good enough to work here. So we were lucky. But I don't want, I'm tired of people saying that, you know, that, yeah, I'm doing the, this is all because the mayor has some plan or to do something for Ra-Ra with the water line. Ra-Ra hadn't asked, the Reno Air Show hasn't asked for water lines. You might have to run a light out there for fire protection in case there was an accident. They haven't asked for any water lines. And you know, there's, people are saying all kinds of hateful stuff. You know, we're sitting here trying to do what's right. And I'm gonna tell you, this council cares for Roswell. They care. And I, I can tell you, and I can go all the way through here and tell you, by how often they come, they show up, they do their work, they think. And I've been in government for a long time, I know, and some people, that's too long. But we are, we cannot let Roswell keep falling behind itself. And you know, when the, when the state police get a 15% raise, and they, they come and they rob eight or 10 officers from our, or six, I think, where are we at, six now, I think? You know, how do, how do we do that? We have all kinds of money and training for them. And it's gone. And when you call the police, when they're not there because they're in Santa Fe or something. And Santa Fe's got all the money, but they haven't sent any back. And we're here, the reason we have the 20% more, we can get a plan to go after it and look after it and get it. When you look at C900 pipe, that blue pipe they put out there, a lot of that's gone up 300%. Not to mention valves. Valves and all the other things we have to do with, because of COVID. And you know, it's gonna get even worse. You know, tomorrow, when everybody goes on strike and they don't send anything in through the ports, better go to Walmart and get your toilet paper. Because everything comes from China. And so you know, it's, I, I have a lot of faith in this council. I have a lot of faith in Mr. Matthews is probably one of the most dedicated people I know. Chad Silver from the school, he went to Roswell schools all the way through here. And you know, Hess is good, and you know, our little clerk's from Weed. So she just came to the bright lights. So we have, we have a really good bunch here. And there is no one here that's out to do anything to Roswell or to be mean to people. We had a water engineer that came in here and put in a tiered system on the pay side. Because 90% of the peoples, the communities in this country have water. The more you use, they charge you more because they don't want you to use it. We're lucky because we're in a rechargeable basin. So our water doesn't go away. But you go to Potalas and Clovis, and they're on the Ogallala, and they don't have water. They put $140 million or $60 million in the Ute Pipeline just so Clovis and Potalas can have water. Because they're on the dry side of that. And we're in an extremely lucky place. We do not need to have a progressive rate at the top yet till we run out of our share of water that we purchased in the past. We don't have to do that. So, and everybody will go through this. And if you have any questions about this new tiered system, it does get us up to 350 or 365, which is a 50% increase. I'm gonna tell you, we have to have it. And, and I, we've had all these hearings. We've, we've all listened to it. We'd be glad to listen. But you know, just don't take any of this personal. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a real, it's a real problem that we have to do here because of the cost that are out there. So, so, all right. Okay, Juliana, Councilman Howerson.
So Chad, I had a question. I know you're trying to make it right. We're trying to give people money back based off of last month's bill. But do you, are you confident our staff will be able to implement all these changes every month?
So that's a great question, Councilor Howerson. And yes, that is one of the things that I've been asking our employees about for the last couple of weeks. I wanna make sure, whatever we do, we get it right. I don't wanna go backwards. I don't want another catastrophe. Those people, we've had more turnover there just in the last couple of weeks because people are losing their minds on, on these folks. And it's, it's not their fault at the water billing department. It is not their fault. It's, and quite frankly, the water billing supervisor has had a tough couple of weeks as well. And he's held up really good. I will share with you that he and his family have a new arrival, a new member of the family arrived on Friday. So they have a new baby. But he has told me, Chad, I've gotta be out to support my wife and family for right now, but I will work from home. And I can assure you, if you implement, if, if the proposal passes tonight, he'll start implementation tomorrow. And he assures me that October will be ready to go and thereafter, under this proposal. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilor Arnold.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot going through my head right now. So first off, Mr. Eintma, looking at the page 13 of 17, I am to understand that we are moving the rate to $3.50 per thousand gallons. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Arnold, so what's presently on the floor is the 350 proposal. Placed on your desks is a proposed substitute, if any member of the council wanted to move that forward. And then I guess-
What's the proposed substitute?
The proposed substitute was what Mr. Cole presented, which would net create the water rate for the next billing cycle of 16 cents per gallon. And then it would become 103 for the, for the November billing cycle, 190 per thousand gallons for December, 278 for January, and then 365 come February.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eintma. So I'm gonna ask a question to the audience by a raise of hands. On the information that was presented, did that seem to be Greek to you? Okay, thank you. Because I sat down and I'm seeing this for the first time. And it's Greek, all right? All the information that was given to me in the last 20, 30 minutes is information overload. So I am extremely uncomfortable making a decision, and it has to be made tonight. The mayor is absolutely correct. We have to make a decision tonight. However, like I said, I don't have an idea of where we go from the 350, what that looks like. I don't have a clear conception or idea on what the city manager just proposed. I'm sitting here looking at it. But it is, I've had so much cross me that at this point, I'm extremely concerned about making a decision, a rash decision in the spur of a moment. And I am not comfortable, absolutely not comfortable, especially considering some of the concerns that have come up, not just from the rate increase, the tiered system. I mean, I honestly don't believe, if we had proposed this in January, you still would have been pissed off in July next year because it wouldn't have changed nothing. So I, I guess I have what, maybe three hours to figure this out? I'm not comfortable with it. I have a concept in my mind, but I don't know if there's a simpler way. So what I'm understanding, Mr. Eintma, is you're saying that in order to effectively make it up to the constituents, we're actually looking at doing a, can someone put that one up on the screen, what we're talking about? Okay. Okay, so is this what we're proposing? This is what you're proposing that we actually shift to? This is just for October? So-
The discounted rate for October. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nope. Way too complicated. It's all Greek. So, Mr. Cole, the first thing I'd like to say is I know you spent a lot of time on this, and I totally, totally appreciate, I have a feeling you spent most of the weekend creating all of this. And considering that your, your mathematical and accounting skills, it's absolutely fabulous. I don't think a good majority of us in this room have that understanding. One, another one of my concerns is creating something that's so complex that it's hard to implement and that we create more errors. We have a lot of errors that are coming out month after month, and people are being hit. So some people have the normal rate. There's others who are, we have billing errors. We have a ton, a ton of errors. And I think us properly fixing this, because good leadership actually requires us to make sure that we are taking the time and doing the due diligence to set up something that's effective. And I can tell you right now, I am not comfortable because that is not what we're doing. I have asked since July for us to stop and reassess and just pause. And every month, it gets worse because we're piling crap on crap on crap. Now-
Mayor Jennings, Councilor Arnold, I don't disagree with you. What I've attempted to do is move quickly. Time is of the essence, as you know. We had a 14-day hearing period. I'd like to get this resolved for our community, my family, my friends, my water bill, your water bill, our water bill. I've put this together in one week's time, essentially. And it took approximately nine months for our former water superintendent to do the same. Now, again, we've talked about the misleading data that we received on 3,000 gallons versus the tiered rate structure and introducing that in July. So I don't disagree with you. I've worked, and you're absolutely right. I have worked very hard, very late nights, to put together a statistical analysis of the rates, prior year, current year, and try to apply something that meets all goals. Revenue targets to do critical replacement because this city needs it. If you don't have water, you do not have a city. But also contemplating that not everyone can afford a 100% or 200% increase from one month to the next month. And that is what this proposal is attempting to do, is fix all of those problems at once. Also addressing the complexity of it, from going to a flat rate to a tiered rate, and all the sections of the tiers, and all the different sized pipes on the access fee. We're, again, attempting to simplify by going back to a flat rate. It becomes a lot more understandable. I know we've gone through a lot here tonight. Actually, I reduced my number of slides because I could have doubled them, trying to just show the impact and what it would look like on a bill. So I didn't want to over, make overly complex. But I certainly want to be clear and provide the understanding on what this attempts to do.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Mr. Eintma, let me ask you a question. In my mind, what I believe that we need to actually do, and I wanna make sure that I propose it effectively according to legal concepts. I personally believe that we should actually go back to our original rate for six months so that we can actually affect, because another part of my concern is we don't actually have a plan. We have, we have pipes that have been broken since, I don't know, 1980, 1990. But, and I know that we don't actually have anything monitoring which ones are out. We don't know, we have that many miles of pipes, but we don't actually know how much of it needs to be repaired and when. We don't have a plan for actually fixing a lot of the issues. We have the water tower that is in dire need. So infrastructure needs for our water department, waste management, those are absolutely necessary. Rate increase is absolutely necessary. But I believe that a professional outside opinion on what we should raise our rates to, to fix the actual given problems is what is most appropriate for this situation. I do not actually agree that we should just blanket charge people with a whole, a higher rate, pulling money in with no actual way to transparently tell the people what we need money for or how to spend it. So I would like to propose that we go back to the original rate, take six months to reassess this again, instead of putting all the pressure on Mr. Cole, on Ernest in our water billing department, on Mr. Eintma. We're putting a lot of pressure on them because we have to get this fixed. And I think it would be foolish of this council, of this administration, for us to actually not stop, go with our original rate and do this. Mr. Eintma, how would I appropriately do that? How would I amend the current ordinance? What would you recommend?
Give me two seconds. Sorry, I'm pulling up the ordinances here.
So, Counselor, what you would propose is a repeal of Appendix A of the rates and replace it with the rates that- and replace it with the rates, uh, that were in place prior to the adoption of twenty-four dash oh five.
So that was, okay, so prior to the adoption of twenty-four dash oh five, um, uh, let me make sure I'm understanding this because one of the things that's confusing me tonight is the actual, uh, item that you put before us. It actually notes, when I read the ordinance that's put in here, the language says that we're supposed to use the, uh, we're voting on something that's reflected in Appendix A. I don't have anything i- identifying what exactly Appendix A is. So that's where I'm kind of confused, but...
Uh, so Counselor, if you were to look at page, sorry, let me get here. Um, actually, Madam Clerk, was the old rate placed, yes, there it is. So if you were to look at page fourteen of your packet...
Okay, found it, found it.
Oh, uh, it's not, your packets aren't numbered?
No, we have like four different types of groups up here, and there is one set that is, but then it, it's confusing because you have a whole bunch of different stuff up here, and that's...
So if you, if you look at your agenda, which is seventeen pages, the fourteenth page of that...
This is Appendix A, fourteen, okay. I, I, all right, the reason I'm asking is because there's nothing marking it as...
Madam Clerk, could you pull up page fourteen of the agenda, please?
No, that's our old ordinance, that's the original when we voted in, correct?
Right, so what, what you'd have to do is, so, uh, nobody's complained about the, so when, the ordinance that created the current rate structure had a rate increase and was a rewrite of the ordinance. We haven't heard any complaints about the ordinance rewrite, to my knowledge. So what we're doing is subbing out, if you want to move to the old rates, you would remove Appendix A from the ordinance and insert with it the previous rates from the previous fiscal year.
But, members of the, before we get into amendments to this plan, in fairness, we've got fifteen people that probably would like to address some of the issues, so we ought to hear if there's, on this basic plan that we are having here now, here, uh, if you have specific problems with it, then so we can hear from the public about their, uh, specific problems, and then we would get into discussions about this, uh, to get it done, or all these people will be here till...
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually happy to hold off on the amendment to hear the public, so absolutely, I'll, I'll hold firm on it.
I mean, it, you know, it's just, huh? So, okay. So if we end, does anybody have any, any of the counselors here not, uh, have any questions on what this plan is about as presented by... Okay, well, okay, so Council, well, they, Counselor Moreau, Counselor Halverson had a question on the plan, so that, as he presented it.
First off, um, the access fees, is there, what are we doing with the access fees?
So in the, the cur- current proposal that I just went through, the access fees, uh, for the month of October would go back to the old rate. Um, in the succeeding months after, the access fees, rather than going up thirty-seven percent, would go up twenty percent.
Then also, um, I respect Council Lady Arnold's opinion, but if we go back to the old rate system, um, the people that paid so much in the past few months won't get their money back. So your plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, in October, the bill will be ninety-three percent less than what their normal bill is. In November, their bill will be fifty-eight percent less than what their normal bill is. In December, it goes down to twenty-one percent less than what their normal bill is. Then in January, we go to fourteen percent, and then in February, it's a flat across-the-board fifty percent increase for everyone, commercially.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the wastewater is just fifty percent increase.
Yes, ma'am.
But some of them were up to, um, how much was the wastewater, up two hundred and some...
Hundred and twenty-three percent on residential, uh, I believe it was two hundred...
With your proposal, people will be get, they're not getting money back, but they're not being billed what their normal bill would be. So that's to make it right, so...
Yes, ma'am.
But the problem is, I think that we're going to have is explaining that to the public because your charts, as she said, they're, they're very confusing. I think if we did some simple graph that shows people this, your bill in October will be ninety-three percent less, but they need to be aware, and it needs to be explained to them clearly, that it will go back up. But just to make it right for what happened last month, this is what it's going to be. Okay, thank you, Ayew.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Moore, did you have a question?
I was missing, yeah, I had a couple on, on this. Okay, so for those, so the change that we're making, that you're considering making with the ninety-two percent increase for the ne- you know, for the next four months, that's going to help the people that use the most water the most correctly? The ones that had the high hike bills, it's going to help those people mostly, right?
I would say no, it's going to help everyone. Uh, it, it's a ninety-three percent increase on the average...
Decrease.
Yes, or decrease, I'm sorry, discount, yes, ma'am, decrease.
Don't say that, don't scare them.
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
So the first month is a ninety-three percent decrease, so you're essentially, if we were looking at the old rate of two dollars and forty-three cents, we're going down to sixteen cents for the first month.
Okay, so I just, I don't know if, if the, the, the audience were, heard any of that. I know what, what you're here for, what we're, what you, what we all here for, because like I said, we all fussing about it. Um, and I do like the part about, there is an indigent and a disabled portion in that. No one mentioned that there is a portion in this res- not re- is it a resolution or is it a...
That's Mr. Intima's language, yes, ma'am.
So in the, um, in the, in this ordinance, there is a, which has never been, I never saw it before, uh, uh, an area where they, there's an indigent in a hardship form that's going to help those people that have bills that they couldn't, we couldn't, you know, this last month that were outlandish, and we all, a lot of, you keep saying, he said something about, "Don't take it personal," and we all understand all of our money is personal, but we were saying, I think he meant it in a different kind of way. When, uh, so I just like that idea about that, I didn't see that before. I kept asking, well, how are we going to get these people their money back? How are we going to make our constituents whole? How are we going? So I appreciate that, I didn't see that till just now. Uh, we talked about all of this, I mean, we talked all about, all of this, and these numbers actually at the workshop, that's all we talked about, but what this was going to look like, and I, um, I, I, this is not my first time, I, s- seeing this because you actually showed us these numbers at the workshop. So, uh, I, I appreciate that, and I read through them, and it is confusing, members, sometimes less is more. You know, we all, we're not all accountants, we're all not mathematicians, so sometimes, less is more. So maybe if you can make it a little more simpler, uh, for some people.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, my other question was the billing, will there, you know, she was talking about errors and billing and so on and so forth. Will, will there be a place or a time where this could be revisited? If there, we noticed that there are some number errors or some built, some errors in the numbers or the math ain't math, and as they say, um, is, will there, is there a chance to, to bring the numbers back if it's not working? This is not all set in stone, is what I'm, I'm hoping, this is not set in stone. So if there's something that's not working, just like we found out it wasn't working last month, that it can be brought forth to, to fix the numbers? Or maybe after a rate hike, what rate, what is that thing called? Where they look at the numbers, rate, rate, rate study, yes. Maybe after that, you know, maybe, that's what she was, you know, is, if, if we see a rate study and our number is still too high, there's still an opportunity. Am I incorrect that it could be fixed or lowered or if, if it needs to be?
Yes, ma'am, you, you are correct. Uh, the council, the governing body, has that authority to do that, uh, at any point in time. Uh, now, there is that fourteen day, uh, hearing period, uh, and again, that's what we're, we're trying to correct this as quickly as possible because a hundred percent, two hundred percent increases on folks in the middle of summer and during peak consumption is our major problem right now.
If we don't change something on this tonight, they will rebuild that same big, large amount again for next month.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have to put something on the, on the ordinance so that we can get a decent number, that you won't be billed that big old two hundred percent or whatever. So I know it's a lot, and I know it's a lot of numbers, and I, I guess because I'm, I like math, so I, it don't bother me all those numbers, but I just think that we need to, to be fair, there's a lot of work going on to this. It may seem fast for some people, but I don't think it's, uh, that fast. Uh, it, it took us more to make that big old mistake. We took a lot of time to make that big old mistake. We did that month after month after month and made that big old mistake. Right, am I right or am I wrong about that?
Nine months, yes, ma'am.
Nine months, and we made a big old mistake.
I believe you were misled.
So necessarily, time ain't necessarily what, you know, we're going to need to fix it, is what I'm, is what I'm saying, because we went into that study for nine months, and we had a big old boo-boo. So, um, I just, just wanted everybody to know that, is there, this is not like, if we don't get it right this very minute, that there's not an opportunity to try to help to get it fixed. And I think the biggest thing is, is we're trying to recoup the people that's lost so much money paying last month's bill by lowering it for the next four months so that you can be even, you can be made half, maybe not all the way whole, but quite, you know, quite a bit whole. Um, so because that bill is already out, we can't take it back, we can't rearrange that bill, we can't change that bill. All we can do is change the bills going forward to try to make you up some of that money that you paid out for that, the hike, the bill that we made, the judgment and error, error and judgment on for July.
All right, that's, I, that's, I think those are all my questions.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor, Council Lady. Next, we have Counselor Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
On the bill.
You know, I've, uh, listened to your proposal, Chad, and, um, you know, it makes a lot of sense, you know. I, I ran on the fact that we need to fix our water infrastructure, and I'm pro fixing our water infrastructure, and I know it comes at a cost, I really do. I also, um, you know, your presentation, I know you put your due diligence into, man, it was awesome. Uh, I know it was, um, pretty gray to the public, I mean, I work in finance all day, and I know if it was foggy and, uh, to me, I'm sure they had trouble understanding it, but, um, you know, I think our city of Roswell is more black and white than we think, you know. We need to put something out there that's more, you know, I love the fact that we're going to make them whole. I love the plan, uh, of, of making them whole. It just kinda, it's, it's a weird thing to see it executed, but I know it'll make them whole. There's no doubt about it. But the fifty percent, um, I struggle with that somewhat. I look, you know, if, I say thirty percent is where we kind of like even out. So anything over thirty percent, five percent more or something, that would get us on the road to recovery, with the intention of making a plan of going forward and possibly, uh, getting a better understanding of what we need, filing for more grants, uh, having a, a significant plan that makes sense to everybody. I think the city of Roswell wants to see a plan. I think they want to see a, a, I, I've, I've talked to a lot of them, they don't mind a rate hike, but they don't want a massive one that's going to bleed them to death, and there's a lot of us that can handle it, but I know so many that it's, man, it's crippling them. And fifty percent is, is, it's a good start, I get that, but I think we should start between thirty and thirty-five. And, um, that's just my personal opinion, and I, I know, and as time goes and we, and we start executing that, I think we could actually, uh, come to, come to grips with, once we look at our plan, uh, maybe raising it later on, but in smaller increments, you know, and, and just tiptoe into it and, uh, lessen the impact on our citizens, but, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, if we could, on the first, uh, now, for anybody who didn't put their whole name and address on here, we have to have your whole name on here for the record. So there are some people like, uh, you know, that just put first names on, we have to have, so please give your whole name when you come up, and, uh, we'll call down the order here and I'll try to get it in here. First one we have is Bella Romaine from, uh, it looks like thirty nineteen Mission Arch Drive.
That is correct, okay. Stu, how's this? Okay, thank you, and good evening, and I appreciate you're allowing me to address you. And before I get to what I was going to say, I just have to tell you. Guys, I've got a master's degree in psychology, okay? My last job here was as administrative director of the historical foundation for southeast New Mexico, and after listening to this tonight, I have to tell you, I'm confused as hell. I mean, and I consider myself a reasonably intelligent person. So please take that into account because I've been reading the, the things distributed by our water department, came here, listened intently, phew. But anyway, I want to just get to something. I realize so many people, this is going to be a hardship, whether it's the fifty percent increase, you're so right, Counselor Johnson, I know many people, we're on fixed income, social security only, no good pensions, we work really hard, no pensions. It's really tough. I know a lot of people who are caring for disabled parents, brothers, sisters, their budgets aren't like this. Anyway, I said to myself, is there maybe some federal funding that's available? Because I know the state, it's tough. I've been told that we wouldn't qualify for anything right now, grants or anything on the state level. I contacted our congressional representative, uh, the office of Teresa Legere Fernandez, and spoke to the gentleman there, Mark Ziantek, who handles water projects, okay? I took, got a quick education in community project funding requests, okay? And I have to tell you, there's money out there, guys. Um, for example, this year, the money is, is, uh, is accorded every March, okay? This year, this fiscal year, the city of Lovington for their wastewater treatment plant improvements, just some improvements, okay? They got just under a million dollars. Now, that might not sound like much because I know we're really behind the eight ball, Mayor Jennings, but Carlsbad got two point five million dollars. Um, Senator Martin Heinrich and Senator Ben Ray Lujan, they have what's called congressionally-directed spending requests, okay? And you can, this is not grants, okay? These are, you get the money. The Army Corps of Engineer, of Engineers is working on water infrastructure projects in Burnaleo and Sandoval Counties to the tune of fourteen million dollars. Now, some of this might not seem like, might seem like a drop in the bucket, excuse the pun, but I figure any monies we get in, any federal monies we get in, is money that the residents here don't have to pay out of their pocket. We should at least try for that. I would love for fiscal year twenty twenty-five for us to have contacted our representative, Teresa Legere Fernandez, Senator Ben Ray Lujan, and Martin Heinrich, and find out, I have, I gave to Counselor Halverson a copy of this which lists the subcommittees that you would need to contact, for example, the Energy and Water Subcommittee for the House, okay? To find out how we could get some of this money. The money is out there, and again, for the small pun, we just need to tap into it. I urge you, before any more time elapses for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, to start investigating this to see if we can get some of those funds.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and just, just for your knowledge, ma'am, we have been working with them on our wastewater plants and others. There's, there was a hundred and sixty million dollars that goes for the Clovis to Potalas water line from Mute Lake that was given out there. The, the problems that most of us had when we got in here, we didn't realize how, uh, how bad are the water pipes are, the cast iron pipes were, and, uh, and all that, but we are... we are working with them, we have a plan. When we got the, we were only given on state plans and money from the state, we've looked at it, that's where we got, the $8 million bid, we got 45% of our grant allocation to fix those tanks was done, but because our water rates were the lowest, some of the lowest in the state, they wouldn't give us 100% grant. And that's why you, that's their way of telling us, we have to pay our share too, and that's the state's way of doing it. So we are, we are working with the state, and the problem is, is when our water supply, our water plan that we have in the back, that we've been following, that we have, is what was done in 2016. Now, we are following that plan, and that's where we have, replacing some 42-inch pipes that was $3.9 million for three quarters of a mile. Though, that, that we're following that plan now, the plan is just extremely old, and we need to go to the federal government, that's, for the 20% increase, that was to get us, so we had some cash available so that we can say, we can show them that we don't have the second lowest rates in the city, in the state anymore, that the, that Roswell is doing their share. And, uh, that's where the problem comes in with the state, and we have been doing that and working towards that. So, uh, yes, we have been in contact with Teresa Legere, we've been in track with Ben Ray Lujan, Senator Heinrich, so we've, we've been do, we've been in contact with him, but we have to come up with a reasonable plan. Right now, it appears from the number of leaks we've had in the cast iron that we need to start there rather quickly, because 160 miles of pipe is a lot to put in, and when it's 80, 85 years old. And so we are doing that. It's not, the whole plan is if we get, we get our plan updated, so we have an exact deal where we can go and do so many, uh, our, our, uh, our water planning department has the oldest pipes, and they know to the best of their ability from the records that have been kept in the past, what is the worst situations we have, and we will go through that over what the records have now. It's not, it's not that everybody has been, uh, just with total blinders on, but we've been with blinders on not fixing some of the pipe when we rob money from one department from the, from these critical funds, when you take sanitation water and wastewater and you rob from them and put it to other projects in the city, that, that creates a problem. We don't even have a, uh, uh, truck, uh, replacement value for, a replacement plan for police cars, we don't have one, we do have for fire trucks, we don't have any for, for sanitation trucks. And that's, that's all things that you don't wanna have to buy 20 a year, you wanna buy one or, or one or two every couple of years. And so we are doing that, it's, uh, so don't, I mean, don't think that we're, this is, we're going into this without looking for federal and state money. But we gotta have a plan where if we, if they give us some money and it's a matching money, we gotta have a plan where we can come up and show them we can come up with a match so we can do the money. I mean, that's, they usually always wanna have a match. So, okay, next we have Troy Grant. And Troy is from 1418 Mossman, and his dad was on here for a long, long time. He was on the council. Mr. Troy.
I'm not going to go through all the accolades, thank you for allowing us to speak. First off, I haven't heard one bit tonight about a project plan for all this money that we're gonna spend on jacking up prices. So, you know, this last plan was put into effect, and I don't know if it was a software problem or what, where everybody got nailed, and all of a sudden I've got, I'm automatic billing, and I'm in arrears, and then all of a sudden this month, I'm gonna pay about 65% more than I paid last year this time, and it seems like to me that we've jumping on, or we're jumping onto the bandwagon, and we don't know where we're going with it. We understand that the piping is bad, nobody's questioning that, nobody's questioning anybody's dedication to putting in time to come up with these plans. But you know what? You put a pain land into effect that obviously, uh, had a bunch of holes in it, and now we're gonna turn around and do the same thing again, and you're telling us we gotta do it tonight, or we gotta wait six months. Well, wait six months, get it right. For crying out loud, we, you know, you're taking money out of our pocket, you're telling me that, that you have a department that runs this thing, and they can't, they can't take the money that they've stolen from us for the last several months and credit our accounts for the next two months and do it that way. Go back to a flat rate, go back to what we had and get this thing right without, without having to feel like you gotta rush into it. This is crazy. Common sense has gone out the window, guys, and nobody's blaming you guys for it, but I'm just telling you, when we rushing these things like this, once you do it, there's no going back. You can't go back and give me cash money for what you took out of my account. You can't. State won't let you, so you got, but you can credit my account over the next several months and give me back, uh, some credit on my account. My bill next month is gonna be 380-something dollars. That's crazy. That's ludicrous. That's all I got to say. If you guys can't figure it out, we're in trouble.
Hey, Troy, if we don't come up with a decision tonight, then everyone's gonna be stuck with the higher tiered rate bill, that's why the hurry is tonight, and...
But you can also go back to the previous rate you have.
Well, and that's what the start is, so like next month, your October bill, we'll go back to the previous rate, cut your bill by 93% to try to pay you back for the, the bad money. Does that make sense?
If your software can handle it. Listen, when we questioned these bills to the water department, we were told several different, first of all, we were told our toilet leaked, and then we were told we had a water leak. We were told all of these things, those were lies, and now we don't trust the city government.
I get it, I do.
And I'm just saying, in order for us to trust you, you know, we've run through this thing, and, and this could be the best plan, plan since, since Noah built the ark, but the problem is, we couldn't see anything, and it was so fast, I'm not smart enough to figure it out.
But the goal is to go to a flat rate and not do the tiered rate.
Go back to our old tiered rate and give us back credit for what you took.
Well, we didn't have a tiered rate before, we had a flat.
And then figure it out, because you don't even know if the software's gonna handle it.
Yeah.
Right? Do you, can anybody tell me that software?
Well, you ask him.
I, that's one of the questions I asked.
One of the things Mr. Cole had stated in there that he had checked with our manager. We had checked with our manager, Mr. Cole said that earlier, and he said he could implement that, and he would start doing it, uh, you know, tomorrow. That's, uh, Ernest said over there from the water department, that's what he said he would do. So, he just had, he just had a new baby.
Can I?
Okay, Fielden, uh...
Can I say something while he's coming up?
Okay.
Mr. Itema, did you say right quick that we cannot, isn't there something that, that we cannot give them their...
Yeah, the speaker understood that, he, you know, it's, it's a state anti-donation issue.
Yeah, anti-donation, so we can't just give you your credit money back, like you said, there's an anti-donation, so we can't do that. So the way of doing this, uh, doing it, why you keep shaking your head for, you don't know?
I got credit next month.
Well, paying twice, paying and getting your money back is different than being paid for a bill, getting the money back from a bill, that's different, right?
Well, we'll...
If I pay, if I pay my bill, overpay, then I can get that money back, but I, if I, if you're overcharged for a bill, you can't get that money back.
Okay.
So, all right, that's, that's, that's just where I was with that.
All right, next we have Fielden Creach, 506, I believe that's F-I-E-L-D-E-N Creach.
Got it right, thank you, sir.
506 South Mississippi.
Yes, I did, what she was saying, I, I've overpaid my bill twice, I got confused on the website paying it, so I paid it twice, so the next month, the water girl just gave me a credit and deducted from what I would do owe, so I know that can be done. Um, I'm not as sophisticated as everybody behind me here, apparently. I, uh, was quite, I just had a few questions. I'm curious to, in a little flyer we were sent back, you know, telling about the changes that were coming and what all the money was gonna go for, which I'm in favor, we gotta fix stuff, but, uh, I'm, I'm just curious, it says here, they placed three quarters of a mile of line on North Montana, it's about $4 million, but then the rest of the pipes after that are gonna be a million dollars for three quarters? Is that a, is that a special section of pipe?
No, there was, we had talked about some 42-inch pipe, and I believe it was 42-inch, and it was, to put that in for three quarters of a mile was $3.9 million. Now, the other, this cast iron pipe they put in was 8-inch, 10-inch, and 12-inch, to the best of my knowledge, and that was all put in in the 40s, and...
Okay, that makes sense, I did, I did know that. Uh, it was mentioned here that, in the paper, it said that you would, Mr. Jennings had said that creating those possible progressive tiers was meant to encourage people to conserve water, which I understand, but it wasn't in this lovely thing. Uh, but the implications were something a lot of us didn't understand, if we didn't understand it, how to get past. I don't, I don't understand, I wouldn't, I never, I went in the Navy, eight years, I hadn't signed nothing on that 17-page document until somebody explained everything I was putting my life away for, and I was only 19, and I still didn't understand, after they explained it to me, but at least I asked the questions. I don't understand that. I don't understand why my, I understand the sewer rates are tied to the water consumption, but it turned my sewer rates into a $94 a month bill, which I'm taking back, 'cause I live alone with a dog, and he does it for free. And I know most of my water goes into my yard, I have trees and flowers and vegetables, and I, my yard's dead, I couldn't afford the water bill in July, and I saw what it could be, said, hell, everything's gotta die. I have eight neighbors on my street, eight of us, seven of us let our yards die, because we're all low-income, we can not afford the, the, the mag, that increase. I can afford a 350 for a thousand, I can do that. I did the math on that while you were sitting, but I, you know, that tier thing just killed In the little flyer, it was mentioned we have 42 miles that deemed to be critical, need to repair, is that different from the 100, is that, the, the other 100, the difference to the 160s, they're not as critical, but they still need to be done, though, because they're cast iron and old?
The cast iron was in there because the cast iron pipe was all put in at roughly the same time, and if you look up ductile steel or cast iron, it tells you the worst thing about it is it is, has excessive corrosion.
Oh, yeah.
Your time is up.
Right. Yeah, I have cast iron in my house, I saw what acid does to that poor thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Richard Bonar, Bonar, and he's from, uh, 1641 Wagon Wheel, Fort Lupton, Colorado. Guess we'll listen, you're a long way from home.
It's important. I, uh, have a question about the commercial building, billing, because nobody talks about it.
Yeah, can you pull the microphone up?
And I've got a five and a half times increase in my bill, and I haven't put anybody in, I don't have leaks, and we can't even agree on the amount of water we're using, though, and nobody talks to me. So I can't do anything right now with bringing new people in, and we, they need, I'm in low-income housing, they need the housing, but I can't afford to pay the city more for that than the rent. The rate's that high.
The rates on the tiered weight, they went up to like 566, and which we paid double what the lower rates were, and so that's how that was structured. We are not going to that, we are going to a straight rate, which will be at $3, $3.50 or $0.65.
It's a very high rate.
Uh, that's not very high for what...
We paid $1,000 a month for quite a while here, under the old deal, that was the whole cost. Now, we're at $59, $49, $100, and we're not getting anything new, anything, we're going down. So I asked somebody to look at it, because if you don't, I know what we're gonna do. And it's, you know, it, it isn't good for Roswell, just like being able to water the grass, you want everybody in town to live in brown, you want the town to die? So I'm just asking that you at least address it and don't use something like this man used, because nobody could understand that, including probably yourselves. But I agree with her that you should do a six-month look. The other thing is, on this transferring of the water money to the general fund, have you done anything to stop that kind of activity and authority? Because you need to. You lost, you've lost more money here than, it should be a federal crime, the amount of money you're trying to pick up from us.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you for listening to me.
All right, thank you. Donald James, uh, from 505 Carter Drive, Roswell.
How you doing? Hey, my name's Donald James, as you already know. I'm here again to protest the outrageous new water bill system that's gone in, and I've heard the different applications. Before July 2024, our average water bill was $60 a month. Now, that's not a lot compared to some of these people that have talked in here, but as of, uh, July or August, and now this month just got out, our bill is threefold that. We're now paying over $200 a month for our bill. It's coming out of my bank account, just like the one gentleman said. And I wanna say this, as far as the gentleman said about the six months or January, whether that bill is now or whether that bill is in January, $200 a month is not acceptable. I called the water company to complain about this, and they said I needed to contact my council people and address the issue, because you folks are the ones that implemented this, uh, thing, and this is the water company themselves that told me this. Now, I'm not sure, I'm just a simple guy, I don't have a master's degree or anything else like that. This policy, new policy that went into effect is nothing short of highway robbery and extortion. Mr. Corr, I spoke with you directly on my phone, and you stated that your water bill was $304. My response was, you may be okay with $304 a month, and you can afford it, but I can't even afford $200 a month. With today's economy, we're struggling to pay our mortgage and struggling to pay, put food on the table. I am taking care of a senior citizen mother, and I'm also taking care of our granddaughter, seven years old, we've been taking care of her for five years now, and we're not getting any help from her parents, so this is on us. I've done some research and found that no other city in this country has these kind of water rates, literally, even including San Francisco and New York City, the average water rate there is $60 to $100 individually per month. I've also done some calculating, again, I have a little bit of math skill. There are 17,576 households in Roswell. If you average $200 a month per household, that comes to a total of $3,500,000 per month coming into the, the city from the water bill. And even if you cut that in half, that is still $1,750,000 a month coming in. Your excuse for the water infrastructure is falling apart because due to decades of neglect. The incompetence of the administration, past and present, in dealing with the financial responsibility properly, should not fall on the shoulders of the constituents and the customers.
Your time is up.[1798.11]
You have over, you have us over a barrel, basically. We don't have a choice of whether we pay the bill or not, because if we don't pay it, we get, the water shut off. We need our water. We need to survive on it.
Time's up, sir.
Furthermore, the job of this council is to represent and to look out for your constituents, not rob us blind, which is the way we feel. I mentioned the option of electing new officials to Mr. Corn, and your attitude was, you could care less about being reelected. That is a lousy attitude, Mr.
Mr. Chad Myers from seventeen El Arco, Ariz Drive.
Thank you. So I know you guys got a difficult job. Um, and just looking at the, and listening to the presentation. So my water rate went from, well, basically I encountered a three hundred ninety-one percent increase somehow. Now, the, the question that I had was, the accuracy of these meters, right? Nobody can answer how they're calibrated and when they're calibrated. And you actually brought it up, Mr. Hilda Brand last time, that nobody knows. The problem that I got is, my water rate's saying that I, I used up a hundred thousand gallons. I don't have that big of a yard. There's no way I used a hundred thousand gallons in one month, even in the peak, peak usage. Contacted the water department, was given the same, same answers of, oh, you got a leaky toilet. No, I don't, not to a hundred thousand gallons, which I did the test, no leaks. I had water personnel come out and actually check, had no, no usage that would subsequent a hundred thousand gallons. So the question is, on the table is, what about these water meters as well? The water meters, we, we don't know, and you can't answer if they've actually been calibrated or how to calibrate them, just because they're electronically read now. I guarantee if I were to install one that was certified by the Federal Ways and Measures, it would probably read a whole lot different than what's being read off of the electronic one. That's, that's a big issue, right? And I know you guys got sold this, previous administration and stuff, but that's something that needs to be looked at, because it's just going to be a continuing, ongoing problem. No matter what, what plan we try to go with as far as a rate charge, if I'm still getting charged excess amount that I don't actually use, we're still in the same boat. Does that make sense? So I come from a former city. I didn't grow up here. They encountered the same problem. They actually went broke, because they encountered uh, quite a few litigation issues, and that actually bankrupted the city. That's the problem, is it's, the, the actual root of the cause is not being addressed. Granted, the tier system was a nightmare, but where is the actual problem at? Is it that, or is it the actual meters themselves? That's my answer. Now, the other question I have is, nobody's addressed the fact that if we cannot afford to pay the water bill, which I couldn't, my bill was over fifteen hundred dollars, somehow, I couldn't afford to pay that, and it's still outstanding. I can't afford to pay it this much. I looked at my water bill for this month, and it's seven hundred dollars. Now, I haven't changed any water usage, any patterns, anything, and somehow it dropped fifty percent, fifty thousand gallons. And I have changed nothing. That's a problem. And I know for a fact, I'm not the only person that's encountering this, because I've spoken to a lot of people that has the same questions and having the same issues, where the fluctuation in the rate usage is atrocious. Now, if I were to cut fifty thousand gallons in one month, I would stop using water. I have a family. I can't do that. But somehow I managed to do it.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Carrie Moore from thirty-two oh one North Kentucky.
Mr. Mayor, Councilors, good evening. As you know, I am like one of the few citizens who have sat through every single water meeting that has been held, and this was when they were in all of the council. We looked at the rates, the tiered rates, and we knew that they were going to be high. We stated they were going to be high. It was posted in the newspaper that they were going to be high. You guys are now sitting here saying that you didn't know they were going to be that high. We told you they were going to be high. So now we're going to a flat rate, which it needs to go to a flat rate. I get that. I did the math on the flat rate, and it looks pretty good. I kind of like that one. What was put in the agenda is these five pages right here. This is what I got to look at. This should have been in the agenda. We need to look at this. We need to see what is going on here, because I don't trust y'all's math. I'm sorry, Chad, and I worked with you. I know you, and I don't have, I have no problems with you. But you didn't get this right. How do we know this is right? What has to be passed tonight is these five pages. The new ordinance repealing twenty-four oh five and putting in twenty-four twelve. That's it. That is taking these two pages of tiered rates to this one little page. That's all you have to pass tonight. This crap here needs to be reassessed, looked at, and it needs to be where we can see it. We need to be able to look at it. This is so convoluted, and I'm pretty damn good in math. This is so convoluted, I don't know what this is. This is, this is wrong. This is sad. This is, this just pisses me off.
You have Tasha Olive from Bay Meadows. I don't know your street address. If you give your street address, please.
Tasha Olive, twenty-six oh four Bay Meadows Drive. And I have a lot of questions. They've mainly come from sitting here, listening to you guys tonight, to be honest with you. My first question is, when, when did you guys know that we had all these great problems with our pipes? And why has nothing ever been addressed before now?
Well, uh, on the pipe, the issues there, we had had, we knew we had a problem with, because our city, none of the uh, monies that were set aside for, by what the water rates uh, did not pay enough to cover the cost. And the previous administrations had taken monies out of the different enterprise funds and spent them for other things. So we didn't, they were robbing from one fund to do something else with the money, and they weren't setting money aside to fix oncoming problems that were coming up. And that's, that's, when we noticed it really bad was last year, when we were four point seven million dollars in the hole in the water fund. And that's what caused us to not, to lose police and everything else, because nobody could get anything but a one percent raise.
Okay. And I understand, um, you know, people needing raises and stuff. So this is not about that. And I kind of resent that you, Mayor, keep throwing that in our faces. We understand that. We all understand that everybody needs to make a, a living wage. But that has nothing to do with the poor management, money management, that has gotten us to this situation. Why, why was the money not used for the pipes? Does anybody have an answer to that?
You're going, you know, it was a whole different administration, and that was the choice they made.
Okay. I, I hate to interrupt you, but you were on the council for that administration. Mr. Corn was on the council for that administration. No, am I wrong?
No, 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 no.
Not one person was?
No.
That's what I thought. Who, who was on? Hmm, okay. So.
No.
Okay. Okay. So the rest of you, I guess maybe are off the hook for that. Also, somebody came up here and said that we don't trust you guys. I, I have to second that. And we don't trust the figures. Um, I've got a bill here that says that I used forty-nine thousand gallons of water. My usage fee for, for the wa, wastewater is a hundred and twelve dollars. I know people whose, whose bill says they've used more water.
Your time is up.
And their wastewater bill is less. How do we trust that? Your bills don't even make any sense.
Yes, ma'am. And so I would encourage you to take that to the water billing department, if that's the case.
Okay. So those, those guys do have.
If that's the case, uh, well, if there's an, if there's an issue with uh, wastewater versus your actual consumption, uh, then the way to rectify that would be to go to the water billing department and have them show you. And we could look at the consumption from month to month, um, but we can make sure that your wastewater is coated properly as well.
Okay. Well, I live in a house of two old people, okay? And I just don't think that we're eliminating that much waste. So my, my last question, I know my time's up. I'm not really concerned. My last question is, how much do you guys really need for this whole situation to be rectified? How much do you actually need? Everybody talks in circles, and nobody comes out and gives us direct figures. What are you really needing?
You, I, you know, I'm going to sit and tell you, we have to have a plan to get it, and we need to go to Washington and get it. The cast iron pipe, to me, is a problem. And because it's, it's more than twice its useful life. And we had a huge, we've had some huge water leaks out on uh, Montana. We, in fact, we had one, three houses on one side of college, and one house the other side, and then two blocks over, we had one there, all cast iron pipes, all within ten days. So.
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 Yeah. Well, one of the, one of the problems we have is that they built the airbase from between nineteen forty and nineteen forty-five.
I know that.
And so that's when they built it. They walked off and left it, and we didn't have the mu, the infrastructure to maintain anything, no matter what. Just to fix it. It's the only thing we could do. To me, this is a thing we can, should be able to get some money from the federal government to help us. We should get some money from the state government. But we have to go together and have, you know, get everything prioritized. Uh, we have a water plan that we've been following since two thousand and sixteen, but we need to make sure we have the most up-to-date information we have to come up with a water plan to go in there. We have to change many miles of pipe a year to, I mean, we can't do two miles of pipe. I mean, when you got at least a hundred and sixty miles just in the cast iron alone.
So four million a year, five million a year, ten million a year?
It could be more than ten or twenty million a year. It could be that much. And I, and you know, this doesn't even, when you fix water rates, it doesn't even plain, doesn't talk about repair of streets and everything else that has to go with it.
Okay. One of your constituents just showed you, though, with the fifteen thousand-plus people with service usage, that we could make, what was it, two million?
No, you're.
So why, why can we not do stuff like that? One of, one of my, um, other people out here, one of your constituents, constituents told us last time that it would.
Time's up. We just have to get through, but.
That it would, um, that if you charge ten dollars extra a month, that it would be like two point five million a year or something. So charge us twenty dollars extra a month. My bill has gone from three hundred dollars average per month in peak usages to I am at six hundred and seventy dollars today. Six hundred and seventy dollars. Smoke that one for two old people.
Okay. Thank you. B R E N D T, B A, Brad? Brent, okay, Baker, I'm sorry. Five, uh, five fifty-eight North Washington Avenue. I guess, no Wyoming.
Five oh eight North Wyoming Avenue.
Yeah, okay.
You asked some of the questions I wanted to ask. Uh, one of the other questions I want to know about is that grandstands y'all are building out there. How much does that cost them?
Uh, that was right at a little less than three million dollars.
And why are we spending three million dollars when you guys can't even pay the other, the police department and everybody else that's, you said they can't even get raises?
Well, it's part of the economic development. We are trying to get more and more uh, business at our airfield, and this is, the airshow is a good opportunity to explain it. So.
This is a specific.
It's a separate grant. For the bleachers, that's a separate grant specifically from the legislature. Uh, that's not part of the, the operating revenues that come in for water or wastewater.
And the other question, then, you stated that there's a lot of grants and stuff from Santa Fe. You said even Washington. What's the plan on going to talk to those people? I mean, have you done it yet? What about Washington? You said you've talked to somebody in Santa Fe. What about?
I've talked, I've talked some people in Santa Fe about the problem that has been developed here, and I've talked with them about that, about getting grants there. I've also talked about, talked with the congressional people about trying to get a, a large grant from the federal government as well. But I, you have to have a plan there to where you can go and show them exactly how you're going to spend it before you can get additional monies there. And that's what the, the purpose is, why we can't just stop at thirty percent. We're going to need to go a little more so we can get that, and we have match money available when, if they give us a grant. Lots of times, it's eighty, twenty, or fifty-five, forty-five. We have to have the grant money there to match it, or else we can't, we can't then uh, participate in the grants that we get.
Well, our bill has gone up over a hundred percent. And uh, I think I figured it at a hundred and twenty percent is what our raise was. And the way you're trying to do it now is not going to work. So I agree with Ms. Arnold. I think you guys should table this. Uh, let it ride for six months, group, regroup, get, get another plan, whatever you got to do. I don't know, but this, this ain't working now. And your new plan is, sorry, Chad, it's, it's, doesn't make any sense to anybody else either, and it ain't going to work either. I agree with you a hundred percent, Ms. Arnold. Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay. Next, I have Steve and Jessica, five oh six West Hobbs. And I need your last name, uh, because it wasn't on here.
Steve Segura.
S C, S E G, you're a.
Segura.
So we had an old agency in Marine Corps. Uh, it's called uh, Fail to Plan and Plan to Fail, and obviously, we're still failing. There's no plan. Uh, my bill was five hundred dollars last month. This month, it was four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Uh, it's ninety-three percent next, I mean, they, they're going to save us next month. I'm still going to be catching up. Okay? I'm still going to owe money. So uh, they have this thing on my bill, and it's called the winter average. Eighty-six thousand dollars, I mean, eighty-six thousand gallons. If I was using eighty-six thousand gallons, my, my house would be floating down the street. Okay? Uh, I don't know what this winter average is, but that's why my bill is four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, because uh, I was looking at my mom's bill, and her usage was seven thousand nine hundred gallons. Mine was seventeen hundred. Meanwhile, her bill is a hundred and eight dollars, and mine was four hundred and seventy-eight dollars this month. I don't know what this, I don't even know why we have a meter at, at the house, that, that meters how much water's coming in, if we're just going to get billed based on a winter average from uh, December, January, and February. Why, why even have a meter? You know, uh, I don't know, uh, I, I appreciate that we're trying to do something to fix this, but it's just not enough in the long run. I mean, what do we have to do? Have a car wash, or, I mean, you guys need to sell. I mean, what do we have to do, have a car wash or, I mean, you guys need to sell candy bars? We need to earn money somehow. But doing it on the backs of of the hard-working men and women here, we can't do this. I'm considering, I'm considering, uh, moving to Artesia or somewhere else because I can't afford water bills here. You know, uh, my my grass, like everybody, is dead. I've had my water, my water off of my sprinklers for two months now.
Yep.
Okay, thinking maybe that's the problem. I call the water company, oh, you got a leak. Well, I know the entry point to my house, it would be soaked with water if there was a leak there. We gotta fix this. I I know we have to make a decision tonight. I can't do another six months with five hundred dollars, you know, I'll be broke. I'm I'm having to pull money out of savings account just to pay my water bill and that's not fair. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've had my light on.
Counselor, you're Arnold.
Thank you. So, uh, I kinda wanna point this out and this is kinda what brought concern to me was tiered rate systems are put into cities and communities all over the United States and they actually are effectively applied. Or Lubbock wouldn't have people or Rio Rancho wouldn't have people. So that is what concerns me is because we put in a tiered system that I understood because of an average. And it made sense because of the average usage that we were given. However, the fact that this was so crazy, so off when it was applied, tells me there's a problem with our system of application. Our billing is off, our meters are off, something is not right. This isn't rocket science. If Rio Rancho can apply this favorably and successfully, what the heck happened in Roswell? That's why I'm saying we need to pause because we can add any rate we want to and those problems will still be here. I believe those problems have been happening to us for several years prior to this administration. But if we don't stop and assess, we will not find them. That's why I keep saying, can we please pause?
Thank you. And next, we have, I have, uh, Josh Bozen, Bootson? J O S H B O O T Z I N? Not here. All right. Richard, it looks like H O S S? Hesse, okay. H E S S E. Thank you. Seven oh six, West Wyoming.
Seven oh six, North Wyoming, Richard Hesse. I'm angry, guys, real angry. Okay, I've heard nothing but what I would see out in the pasture, bunch of bull crap. A lot of blaming other people for your incompetence, Mayor. Okay, saying, oh, we weren't on the city council then. Y'all passed this stupid thing. Y'all read it. So I'm angry. Now, let me tell you what, a hundred and seventy miles of pipeline needs to be replaced at four million dollars a mile. You know how much money that is? Six hundred and eighty million dollars. Doggone, you think you're gonna get out of my butt? I don't have that much money, I'm on a fixed income. I have a little side business and stuff that helps me out now and then and I sell my pecans when I can grow them, but I can't grow them now. Now, there's some other things, other issues inside this mathematical genius here. I applaud your attempt, but you have a flaw in your reimbursement. You're using the fifty percent reduction, ninety-three percent reduction in low operating months. My bill was seven hundred dollars, oh, over seven hundred dollars. I used a hundred thousand gallons worth of water in July and that's what I paid in August. Okay? Now, I'm gonna use my projected rate, 'cause I've been following my meter every day. I've got pictures on my phone, so I know exactly how much I'm using. My projected rate, even on the progressive scale right now, I've cut my water usage back so far, my trees are gonna die. But I will have a bill of about a hundred and thirty-four dollars next month, not this month, because I just got a bill for five hundred and some odd dollars. And that's after cutting my water halfway back, over halfway back. I shot my whole front lawn off. I got two, two properties. I got four pecan trees, I got a peach or a plum tree, I've got an apple tree, they're all gonna die. That's gonna make Roswell look like crap. Now, that that old gentleman back there said, yeah, let all the lawns die, go ahead, yeah, it's gonna make us look bad. Yes, it is. The bottom line, this young lady is the smartest person I've heard tonight 'cause I haven't heard some of the other smart ones speak that I heard last, last meeting. But what I've heard a lot of is shifting the blame to other people and dropping it on our backs. Now, what I'm gonna do, I just looked something up and what I'm gonna do, because there's a question about the meters.
Your time is up, sir.
Well, I would like to make one point. I'm going to install a meter, it's gonna cost me five hundred and seventy dollars for the meter. I'm gonna install it on my side of the water line, 'cause I've got a shut-off valve. I can go in there at any time and shut it off. And I'm gonna put in an analog meter, just like I had ten years ago. And I'm gonna have it calibrated first and then, once I show you that there's a difference, then I'm gonna get my team together and we're gonna have a class action suit. Okay, that's my point. So thank you for giving me the time to share my anger, my frustration. Deal, here, deal, go back to the base rate now and let's figure this out properly. And Mayor, you get some people out here, some of these wonderful people that are right here, you get us involved with it. We'll help you. But we were never told about this crap, okay? I don't get the newspaper, so I don't go by the the propaganda that everybody puts out. I want facts, I want figures. And I want some reimbursement, too. This plan was pretty good, but it doesn't, it will only reimburse me about twenty percent of my my costs for the last extorted two months. I stress that, extorted. You guys are extorting us. Thank you.
Next, we have Juan Alvarez, six oh seven East Fifth Street. Juan, you hear? Okay, not here. Okay, we have Darrell Caton? Darren? Oh, excuse me, I said Darren. Oh, oh, yeah, okay, sorry. Nine Granite Circle.
Well, I don't have to be as angry because all these people are saying half the stuff that I was gonna say. You're right, I haven't been, part of this is our fault. I'm talking about us and the people because we've had a shitty, excuse my language, city council for, I can't tell you how long. And they've made a lot of mistakes and made a lot of errors and and they have not represented well. And I I did hear, I believe Angela Moore, said we made a mistake, somebody owned up to it. That's not common. The problem with this here is, that really kinda bothered me, is enticing us with enticing us with some credits and some discounts and all that stuff on the back end with a raise, with a rate increase. That's why that doesn't work. Because within a week, he's trying to fix two problems. Tonight, you have one problem to fix and that's these bills. We're not, we're not trying to fix the shortage of all this other stuff. You tried something, it didn't work and it was wrong and it was inappropriate and obviously. I question the meters. I I don't know how they come across, I was talking to a friend at dinner the other night who waters his yard twice as much as me and lives down the street from me. His water bill went up a hundred bucks, it went up to three hundred dollars. His yard's bigger than mine, I live on granite. And my bill went, I water, it was about three hundred, went to eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I mean, that's, come on now, I saw that about shit. Now, you can put this on the TV or, I mean, not on the TV, in the newspaper and say, oh, these are our new rates and so. That doesn't mean shit to me. I work for a living. I'm not gonna sit there and calculate what mine's gonna be. I trust, and my problem is, is I've trusted our city council. I've not gotten involved in city government and stuff like that. I try to stay away from it, I try to trust our people and and we've gotten burned year after year after year. And then I don't need excuses about other people. You're right. I'm not discounting that. But from this day forward, I want some promises from you guys, from all aspects of this whole situation. Number one, the meters, hey, I know we're still paying on them. If they don't work, hey, I'm off and let's move on, let's figure something else out because if it's, if, that's the core of it, that's the beginning. If those aren't working, we need to fix them, we need to figure it out. I mean, I I can't compute what a hundred and twelve thousand gallons of water, what that is. But that's what I was billed for. And I I'll pay two or three hundred dollars a month for my water bill because I water my yard. But I, these numbers don't mean anything. I trust in my city government and that's my problem. And evidently, maybe I need to get a little more involved.
Your time is up, sir.
I've heard one member of this council one time tell me that he didn't wanna be here. But he had to because it was, there was, it had to be fixed. Well, damn it, and I told you one time. I'll vote for you, but you fix this shit. And I wasn't just talking about this water, I was talking about everything. Character and integrity, those are the two things that you need to keep in mind when we make every decision when you're sitting on that council. Character and integrity, you represent our, these people in this town. Let's get this right. That's not an answer. I think we need to do something for six months. We need to get these rates back in line, whether it's to stay with the old rates or whatever. I know you guys wanna give money back, but don't give money back and then take it away. That's what that does. And I just saw that tonight. It's easy to read. I don't know what this three fifty, how that compares to our old rates are. I don't know if that's appropriate. I have no idea. That's y'all's job, that's his job. But the point is, tonight, the decision that has to be made is to fix these bills, not to incorporate a rate increase for later on, okay? We gotta fix this problem first. Give you guys six months. He had a week to figure this out? He he may have done an excellent job. But that's not enough time because obviously, when they ran through this new billing tiered system, somebody didn't implement that on bills as examples before they implemented it to everybody else. Or they would've seen the problems that we have. They would've seen that my bill went from three to eight hundred dollars. They would've seen it if they would've implemented it and tried it out. I don't know what they did. But please, you guys are our representatives, whether we like it or not. And I implore you, make promises to us that you're gonna get this shit fixed. And excuse my shit.
Next, we have Yolanda Galvan, twenty-eight hundred Purdue. She here? She's gone next. We have Vic Bakta from Medesin, thirteen-ten North Main. Vic, Vic, that's what it says here. Is it Nick, Nick?
Vic, Vic Bakta. Hello, everyone. I have a few things to mention as a hotel owner. We've been here for ten years and we've been helping you guys from day one. Once we build convent center, you guys propose collecting two dollar fifty cents per night for guests, right? So we're collecting, people are mad. People don't wanna pay extra two dollar fifty cents, they're not gonna use anymore. We're still collecting, we are helping you. So we got a bill. We've been paying like roughly fifteen hundred dollar bill. We've been told on month of June, then bill will be raised almost double. I was paying in advance before bill issue, so I paid three thousand dollars already. When I see my bill, it's come seven thousand dollars. Seven thousand dollars. I've been told by this, the person who worked at the city water department, I forgot his name, he's helping, it's okay. So what I've been told, it's almost double. As a business owner, okay, understand. I'm ready to pay, I'm helping city since day one I'm, we moved here. All right. So second month, same thing, seven thousand dollars. So in two months period, almost ten thousand dollars, my bill, extra. It's my twelve employee payroll cost. My twelve employee literally crying at my place. They got same thing, double, triple bill. So they asking me help, borrow extra money. How can I help them? I already broke in my budget. My revenue did not increase four hundred fifty times, but my bill increased four hundred fifty times. How can you guys justify? So, understand your, Mr. Manager, that you're gonna release the money or helping credit for coming using by ninety percent decrease, understand that. But what happened, we already paying ten thousand dollars. Yeah, that money will not coming back. And our revenue did not increase, as I said, four hundred fifty percent. And please, hotel industry is different way than others. We cannot support that tier system, never, ever. We can pay twenty-five percent increase, thirty percent increase, which is fine, we can manage somehow, we can save other way. But we have fourteen employee, twelve employee, we have to run also. And these are not cheaper also, everything is high. Utilities going like crazy. So please help us.
Your time is up.
Otherwise, what happened? Somebody come to Roswell, they need rooms. We have a charging hundred dollar per night. We can't rent it, they can't afford that. So they losing money, city also losing money. If people don't like to stay here, they can move different town. They can go Carlsburg, they can go Artesia, they can go Portalese, they go different town. So anyway, city will lose the money from hotels if you guys don't support hotels. So please try also, grow the economy, bring something in town. That way, every be small business, they have job, more business, everyone happy. And I also support each and everyone in Roswell, forty-eight thousand people. They paying three hundred times, two hundred times extra. They can't increase their income. Thank you, please support each and everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Bakta. Next, we have Bella and Scott Wright, three oh eight South Washington and fourteen-ten South Lee.
Union, uh, three oh eight Union.
Union, sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, we recently had a major pipe explosion at the end of our driveway, so I can agree with you. Um, the the water burst through the ground so hard it knocked the street light out, so you got, you definitely have a problem. Uh, the other problem is, we we have another house we just moved out of and, uh, we're fixing it up to sell it, so it's been vacant. And we have a new meter and for a longest time, we have zero consumption and all of a sudden, we got four thousand gallons out of nowhere. And, um, with our zero consumption, not flushing any poop or anything. And, um, with our zero consumption, not flushing any poop or anything, a hundred and seventy-eight dollars on an empty house. And then, uh, the second thing, third thing, um, reputation management seems to be a huge problem for the water department. Um, we went to complain the other day, and there was an armed guard behind us with a nine millimeter. And he, he gradually worked his way up behind each and every customer that came in, just to make sure they didn't get out of line or say the wrong thing or get uppity. That's serious. That's a huge problem. And even worse than that, I got an angry wife, and she's probably gonna say something about our bill.
So our bill, I know that it technically is not on you all to a point, but you all did review it. You voted on it. You knew that this was gonna happen, and you truly should have paid attention. She's been the only one to actually try to dive into it and figure it out and truthfully have the common sense coming out tonight. As far as it goes for our bill, I mean, ours, yes, we can cover it. We can handle our bill, but there are people that cannot. There are girls, there are friends, there's our family that we know they had, hold on, but, that they had to decide between paying their water and getting food or paying their mortgage. That's not something that should be happening. We already have horrible interest rates, horrible inflation. We shouldn't have our own city trying to kill us off too.
I think you're probably gonna vote this in tonight. Your plan, because there's like six of you, seven of you in agreement, and two of you maybe not thirty percent. That's great all day long, but you're gonna stick us with fifty in about three months. That's not cool. If you do that, to fix your reputation problem at the water department, you gotta have a little thing at the bottom that says, this much of your money went towards the project, whatever that project is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I did the council, we've, uh, we're, we're done with all the public testimony that have requested to speak. Uh, is there anybody that wants to say one last thing that hasn't spoken? Okay. You'll be quick.
Richard Bartlett, eight zero five Saunders Drive. Um, I spent over forty years budgeting, planning, reporting against those plans, very insistent plan, very insisted forecast, all of those things in business planning that you do, and usually you have a plan. What we saw tonight was an elaborate snow job. I'm not criticizing you, but it doesn't have a plan that you're bouncing these numbers against. And you're trying to absorb the things that Mayor, you told us about the infrastructure, cast iron pipe and so on. It's understandable. That should be on the plan. These are the things we're doing. This is how much it's gonna cost. We're gonna budget it. Go to the state, all the surpluses the state has from the oil and gas revenues. Go to President Biden's Build Back Better. Get some of those dollars. You said you talked to the people about it. Everybody here tonight, I say, about to say ditto. Our bill went up. Everybody's bill's going up, and it goes up disproportionately, and the bills are wrong. We had a jump in the bill. The next month they gave us the credit to make it more tolerable. And the net bill after that credit was listed on the next month as past due. Said we're gonna shut you off. I just don't understand what the billing is. These, these reports don't have any credibility at all. That's ditto what everybody's said so far. So I'd say first thing, get a plan, then work to the plan. Go for funding wherever you can. And comparing your rates with a, with another city that has worse rates is not the way to do it. You, you need to make yourself efficient so that you beat them, and you don't have to compare against them. Thank you for having the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. If you come, this is the last one. Please identify yourself and your address.
My name is Brigitte Bakta. I reside at twenty-three thirty-one North Main Street. Um, I was here last time as well, uh, and I, I was under the impression last week, last time, that you guys were, you guys were gonna take the vote to repeal this tier-based system of the billing. And the problem with that is, uh, it's not one rate. It's five different rates for every six thousand gallon increases. So that's what I understood last time, that you were gonna take the vote last time on the twelfth, you were gonna repeal it. So hopefully, this month's bill was gonna be going back to either the flat rate increase that about thirty-three percent or thirty percent increase that I calculated is sitting here. Um, you know, but I, I hope today before the day ends, at least you take a vote to repeal this tier system. You know, and at least either some may agree to this. I don't. I do like Councilman Arnold's proposal to go back to the previous rate and figure way for next six months or three months, to get a flat rate increase. And, you know, you guys can also, one idea there is that you can temporarily, increase, volunteer or not volunteer, but randomly choose customer and try them, try the increase on them. I understand they may get angry. But eventually, if the system works for them, including some businesses, um, you know, then you can try implementing that if it, you know, after like three months period. Pick random residents, random business, increase the, the flat rate increase on them for three months. Then, of course, you can credit them back if it doesn't work in the bill. But if it does work, you can also credit them for the three months they were charged or increased or what you said, whatever the rate at the end, and, uh, you guys decide. Then the other thing is, um, I do agree that, you know, city does need infrastructure improvement. Do you have a basic beginning date or for when the project will start if this doesn't get repealed, or how much money do you need to start the project? Then the other thing is, um, access fee. Why? Everybody has a different access fee. Me, I was just comparing my thirty-room motel to a gentleman who has sixty-five, sixty-five-room motel. We have, uh, same thing on sanitation pickup, three times a week. I have Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. He has Saturday pickup instead of Friday pickup. He's a hundred dollar less than me. Doesn't make sense. Same thing with the water meter reading access fee. Seventy-one dollars, eighty-five dollars, forty-two dollars. This is business. I'm not talking about residential. Residential, maybe. I don't know what it is. But, uh, you know, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense. For my thirty-room motel compared to a fifty-five-room or sixty-room motel, the we, I pay a hundred dollars more for thirty-room motel than eighty-room. So, you know, something that's just, doesn't make sense to me.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. So everybody's had a chance, okay? Thank you. Okay, now we'll be back on the, we'll be back on, uh, the amendment, the amended bill that is presented, uh, by Mr. Cole. Well, it hadn't be, no. Okay. He has discussed his work, and we, we made a motion. Uh, and so it has not, oh, excuse me. Okay, Council lady, Allison would like to ask a question of Mr. Cole.
First, I, I do want to make it clear that we, if we table this, like some of you suggested, that means the high rates will stay in place, which is not what we want to do. Chad, I do have a question for you.
They're not wanting to table it.
Yes, ma'am.
They just misspoke.
Um, so you're, the, the thing that's on the screen now, you said that our wastewater would be a fifty percent increase, but what I'm seeing right there is well more than a fifty percent increase. But the sheet that you've given me on this shows it would go from, in February, it would go from eleven ninety-one to seventeen eighty-seven, which is not reflected on this sheet that's showing on the screen. And then if you go down to the businesses, the small commercial and large commercial, those are also more than a fifty percent increase on the base rate. I'm just, I don't know if I'm reading it wrong or I'm confused or.
Counselor, this is the current rate structure up on the screen. Yes, ma'am.
Current rate, okay.
So, in my proposal, it's different, uh, from the current rate.
Cause your, your current rate shows it goes from eleven ninety-one to seventeen eighty-seven.
Yes, ma'am.
So then the access fee, I, I think that Mr. Bakta was talking about, the access fee would remain the same regardless. It wouldn't change. Would it still change based on your address or your usage?
So the access fee, you can see over there in the, uh, the, let me. Madam Clerk, could you pull up my presentation, please? The access fee would go up twenty percent over the old access fee.
With the old one, not the current, but that would, that's across the board.
That's across the board. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Well, the screen went off. Okay. Okay, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard, I've listened, and I can't disagree. We have a huge problem. We said we had a problem. Shame on us for passing this, putting this in place. But the thing today we're talking about is the remedy of how we get this corrected. I have a question with you, uh, Mr. Antima. If we, whatever rate we pass tonight, will that be effective October one billings or, uh, or when will it be effective? Will it be back to September one if we pass this tonight?
If, if you pass it tonight, so we'll have to install the bills and that better? Yeah, so it would be effective for bills that leave starting October fifth, and we won't be able to, it'll take, we'll have a couple, it'll take us a week to re, to reprogram, so.
Billings that went out for September will be what they are.
Yes, but the bill
Two months that we're dealing with here.
Yes.
So, Mr. Cole, when you did your presentation, you talked about the month of August, but I don't see where you've done any calculation for the month of September and how this reduces that. And what I'd like to see is an example, because what you're saying on these sixteen thousand gallons, average consumption, then you're going down to six thousand for two months. How, how does that make a person whole? And then I'll go into the third question is, you have not asked Attorney General for an opinion.
No, the, nobody in this room is capable, a, a, a sitting legislator has to ask for an opinion.
Ask for an opinion from the Attorney General to see if we can give refunds based on calculations that we feel were a mistake.
We can definitely ask.
Is that not true?
Yes, uh.
And then we have to wait for the Attorney General to come back and tell us whether we can do that or not. Is that not correct?
Correct, and there's no guarantee that he would say we could.
Correct. Now, the other question I have is the application to reef, to give credits, you're saying is an anti-donation clause, correct?
Likely, yes.
But the use of federal funds is not an anti-donation clause.
So the, the use of federal funds, uh, when it's directed as a pass-through is never an anti-donation violation. So the, the question is depending on what the source is. My particular opinion on the remainder of federal funds from COVID is that it likely doesn't. I've consulted other attorneys in the state and the Ethics Commission, and they all disagree with me, so I can't give you that firm answer.
But, but we've used COVID funds to pass on to the water department before.
Yes, although that was a different, uh, set of funds.
No, they all, it was all the same funds. The, the whole money came out all at one time. It was all for lost revenue, correct? That's my understanding. It came in as lost revenue, so those, those were not separate funds. There were funds that had to be consumed on certain items before a certain given point in time, but the funds all came in together. So COVID money's still in the city budget are exempt from anti-donation. We've done it before.
That is correct. Like I said, I, that would be my opinion. Everybody else I've spoken with disagrees with me on this one.
But you would have to, you, you could defend that depend, that opinion based on your opinion.
Uh, I could, I would defend my own opinion, yes.
I mean, you could defend that.
It's, it's defendable, but like I said, I, I don't like presenting my opinions when there's not, I mean, the
We have to rely upon you, and I trust you, that what you're saying, and so you're answering my questions here. So my question is, there's twofold here is, one, how do we get refunds back to, based on taking a, a rate retroactively back to individuals? And it will take time. This won't happen overnight if, if, if that's a path that we can go down. And, uh, it will consume a lot of man-hours to get that corrected and sent back. But hopefully, we can get some software, uh, extraction that will help us in some manner, some form or fashion. So that is one issue, is you're getting credits back to people to rectify the mistake that was made. The second item is, what is the rate and what is the plan? Not a single one of us up here are masters at developing a rate plan. We have no idea you have to rely upon. So when we start talking about two sixty-five and three fifty and whatever, we're just throwing a dart at the board. We don't know whether that's the right rate or not. We think it might be. And fifty percent rate increase, we think it might create, I don't know how many more million dollars it was gonna create. I know when I did the math off the budget, it said a thirty percent rate increase would cover the four million dollars plus an additional eight, five hundred thousand dollars in repair money above the budget that was already prepared. So I have a real difficult time trying to say, and I appreciate your work, because I know it's a lot of work to go do what you did. But it doesn't take into the month of September, does it?
It does not. We have not completed billings September.
Therefore, those rates may need to extend out longer, and you're asking us to make, because that's off the old tiered system, that the September rates are, or the September billings are.
Currently.
So you're asking us to only look at this and only give people credit under this new system for one month and not the two months, correct?
No, sir. Uh, I'm actually asking you, we're discounting
Your calculations, that's what I want to see, what's your calculations? How, how does that make people whole for two months of this tiered billing? I mean, take sixteen thousand gallons off the old str, and, and tell me what that costs under the tiered system. And then what is the average consumption? You're saying is six thousand gallons for the winter consumption, which I think is probably high, but, but I'll take that as an example to work with. I mean, I don't see that worksheet.
So
Here's what we started with. By reducing these rates down to these levels, where is that? Where's the cost recovery, shall I call it? I don't see that. Because I, I know, Chad, you're well-trained in this, well-trained, and I'm not questioning that. What I'm questioning is where does that point come? And I don't see it coming because we're only talking about the month of July here. We're not talking about, or the month, the August, August billings and September billing. We're not talking about, this calculation doesn't take the September billings into place. So I am ready to say, we don't know what the rates should be. We think they need to be. We think, but we don't know. So, yes, there is a master water plan, but it was dated back to twenty-twelve. But I guarantee you, none of you read it. It's been implemented, but none of you have read it.
Not all of it.
And so that plan needs to be, and I'm not calling you out. I'm just asking you, have you read it? It's there. It's kind of like the twenty-sixteen master plan. It's there. It's there, it's kind of like the twenty sixteen master plan, it's there, but you gotta dig in and go find it, and it's time for us to do a new water master plan. Mr. Mayor, I understand that we got problems with what we have, and I'm not gonna, I'm tired of looking backwards, tired of pointing the finger, this is what we have today, this is what we're gonna do, are we just gonna sit here and just wallow around and die? Or are you gonna do something to move forward? A new water plan needs to be developed, because I don't know whether four million dollars a year is good, I don't know whether six million dollars a year or ten million, I've had conversation with the mayor about seeking outside help, one of the things that he and I have discussed is going up to Santa Fe, talking to the legislators, give us back some of our grocery receipts money, we're not the only community with these problems. Alan Magordo has these problems, True the Consequences has these problems, Rio Rancho has these problems, they all have them, so it takes time, though, to get those legislators to listen and, and pay attention, and so that we, you need to govern at the lowest level, Santa Fe is not the lowest level for us, Roswell's the lowest level, but what I'm gonna ask is, if I can see a difference about what this does, but what I'm gonna probably propose tonight is that we go through, and I've talked to you about this before, I've talked to Mr. Cole about how do we calculate refunds to people, and how we can get this done, and how we can go along and do it with, we're gonna have to do it with COVID money, you know, I've been always one to say, we're not gonna spend COVID money unless it's something really important to the citizens, well, to me, this is important to the citizens, that we somehow get this, we get it right, or if not right, ninety percent or something better than where we're at today, we all know the tiered system is over with, it's done, no need to talk about it, but it's where we go today, and I disagree with the fifty percent rate increase on...
January.
Solid on wastewater, because I ran a number, and if we take the rate water, of the, of course, this is different than what you had, but if I just took the increase that was in the original for the base rate, excuse us for calling it an access rate, it really was not, you've always paid it, it was been buried in your bill, but it's a base rate, but if you take the base rating from what it was to what the new one is, by just taking seventeen thousand installations of water meters, and just taking the, I said that eighty-five percent of them were residential, ten percent were small commercial, and five percent were large commercial, that rate increase alone, just on the base rate, if we left it where it's at, will generate an additional three point two million dollars, just the base rate, and if we left the other rate alone, by not even changing the consumption rate, the base rate, that we took it up to a hundred and thirty percent or whatever we did, and I agree, that, that base rate was not enough for our wastewater, not enough, at eleven dollars and ninety-one cents, no way, but what I'm gonna ask for is, you can tell us what that will help people for two months of billings, because I'm gonna make a motion here pretty soon, you gotta get the first one on the table, but I am not going to go for a fifty percent rate increase on water, I'm not gonna go for a fifty percent rate increase on wastewater, and I wanna find a way to get money back to these people, because... And I know you don't like my idea of, of having to go back and manually calculate all of these bills, because you say that it all has to be man, hand calculated.
That's just according to staff and talking to water milling and accounting.
We have to come up with a plan, if that's what we come up with as, as an ordinance, we have to have come up with a plan of how we're gonna do that, again, plan, 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 and operate to your plan until your plan doesn't work and adjust your plan, so I'm not gonna say anymore, um, thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, actually, I just had that on, and I'm, I'm gonna actually have to say that I wholeheartedly agree with Mayor Pro Tim Hildenbrandt, but, hang on, we haven't made the actual motion for the, the, um, actual, we haven't made a motion towards going on what's the table, it's just wide open right now, correct? Okay, um, okay, well, then I don't have anything to say until we make a motion, because at this point, we're all up in the air and all over the place, so we can't even start playing ball.
Thank you, Councilor Arnold, or, excuse me, thank you, Councilor Arnold, Council later, um, Council, Council Lady Moore.
My thing is, on our workshop, we did have the, for our, all that we're here, the lady that came in, that does the meters, no one, Chantel came and explained to us, because we were, the questions were, is it the bill, is it the usage, is it the leakage, is it the meter, you know, is it a part of the meter, and so she came and explained to us and brought an actual meter in, and was showing the parts and what may be working and what may not be working, and so that helped us kind of understand a little bit, and she was saying that in the two years, that they've only had two meters of all the meters, that the number, that they could not explain the over number of usage or that, whatever, so that it may not be as much a problem with the meters as it may be billing or something else, but I think that is something that, that, and, and that needs to be looked at, and she was willing, even though she's behind now because of this, because of us, that she was going to, she was actually running the test with the person there right there, they could see where the flow was, and so they were able to understand, I actually want her to come out to my house and say, help me to understand myself, I know I, I was gone for two and a half months, and so why am I billed triple two, so I under, I, I do understand, and it is personal, but I do, I do understand that that makes sense, so if it's not the meter, then let, then, then I can work out something, let me know it's not the meter first, and then I could start fussing about something else, but, um, I do, I do, I'm just not sure where to go here, I, I don't think going back to the original rates, flat rate, straight is necessarily the answer, I don't necessarily even agree that this nice color-coded thing is the answer, but where do we meet in the middle so that we can start somewhere so that you're not in, we're not in another month with those, with the bills at that rate, and even them paying them back, how will we decide how much you're gonna pay them back? How do we go, are they gonna go bill by bill and, and have the people, have the people come in that are concerned, or, or do they separate the, what the real rate costs minus the how many use, I don't know, so that's what I mean, it would seem like it would, it would take a long, it would take, it wouldn't be instantaneous, like you said, because it would have to be figuring out, well, how much do I actually owe, owe him, just because it was two thousand one month, and it's eight thousand the next month, doesn't mean I owe you the difference, so there's something in, you know, in the middle, so, um, I think we have to, as we, as we make these motions, consider that, uh, how do we, about get, paying people back, we need to make sure we understand that, and we need to make sure that the people understand there is a person that can, that, that can each question, there's a billing person if it's about your bill, there's a meter person to talk to if your question is about your meter, and, um, I just want to help the most people that we can help, like I said, we already made a mistake, and everybody yelling, and we're not happy either, but I, I'd rather y'all yell at us and let's get this right, or get it tight, at least, and it may not be right all the way, but at least tighten up a little bit, so that people are not feeling gouged, and people are not feeling like they're trying to pay six hundred million dollars by, by, by increasing the bills all at, you know, at once, and I just want us, maybe if we can meet in the middle for now, just, like I said, and we told the lawyer already said to us, Antima said already, that if this is not working, we can go back and readjust it and, you know, figure it, maybe take the three months at the basic, at the rate, and see if this works, maybe what he, he, what he presented does work, how do you know? That we know the two thirty-five was, the basic flat rate wasn't working either, because otherwise we wouldn't be in such a big hole, so we know we have to do something in the middle, is where I stand, is something in the middle, and so that we can, we can, we can try to, they keep saying making this hole, it's kind of hard to be making a hole if you owing somebody nine thousand dollars, somebody's billed is ten thousand dollars, it's kind of hard to make that person, you know, feel whole, and even a low-income person, that, that three hundred dollars may be a lot, so I just think we gotta find some way, you guys, to, to start so that, otherwise, we're gonna be here, I don't care, we can be here all night, I don't care about that, because I'm retired now, so I don't care about that, but I just feel like we have to try, we can't get it, I don't know if there's such thing as getting it right tonight, I don't know if there's such a thing, Councilor Arnold, I don't know if there's a thing tonight about, you know what I mean, getting it right tonight.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. Do not interrupt another speaker speaking.
I do, I get that, you know, that's what I do, we, we have to make a promise that we're going to get it at least as right as it can be, I totally agree with that, but I just feel like we have to start somewhere so we can figure out what's, you know what I mean, we have to start somewhere so that, that we're not gouging them for another day, not another minute that we're at charging that rate, that we're, not another second are we charging the rates that they have been charged, so whatever we need to do so that we can get started on something that we can put forth, so that it, so we can start, you know what I mean, that's, maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's just kind of how I feel, and I don't want it to be high, and I'm, the fifty percent is a lot, I don't, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know if I agree with that either, but I think somewhere in the middle, just, you know, and just so that they don't, you know, we feel like we're, 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 we're on your side, we're not trying, you know, I don't care how many miles of pipes got to be fixed, it's gonna get, it's gotta be fixed somewhere, but I don't expect y'all to pay for it, and I don't want y'all to think the way it's coming out, that that's how it's, maybe that's, maybe it's how it sounds to you, I get, I'm sure that's how it sounds to you, but I hope, I really hope, you know, I'm in the wrong vision if that's what, if that's the, the plan, so y'all just be patient, we're trying to stop the hemorrhaging, I don't, you know, how soon it'd be, but that is the plan, to stop the hemorrhaging, I yield.
Thank you, uh, if a counselor wants to ask another counselor a question, they ask that counselor if they will yield, you do not blurt out across the floor in someone else's speaking time, if they ask you to yield, you can yield and you can speak, but if they do not ask you, you cannot blurt out in another person's speaking time, and so it's only about keeping fair, straight rules of order as we go along. Counselor Cabin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Angela, thank you for, I mean, where, where we're at right now, um, you know, two weeks ago, I talked about the future of Roswell, I talked about being at, at three dollars and fifty cents for a thousand gallons, I don't want to talk about percentages, three dollars and fifty cents is, is a reasonable amount for a thousand gallons of water, you guys go to the windmills, you guys go to Culligan, I mean, it costs you, uh, three dollars and seventy-five cents for, for, uh, for fifteen gallons, um, so a thousand gallons for three dollars and fifty cents, whether it's gonna be three fifty or three sixty, we're talking about a dollar amount, I, I've, I've sat up here and I've listened, we own the fact that we made a mistake with this tiered system, it was flawed, I can tell you that there's, uh, four other counselors up here that came on, uh, and we've been on here for nine months, and I've listened to some counselors sit here and talk about how confused they are about where we're at today, and I know one counselor has meetings with the manager, the assistant city manager, the attorney, on a weekly damn basis, and she wants to come in here and tell us that we, she's confused, she doesn't know what's going on, and we need a plan, and we need all this stuff, been on here for three years, we come in, we've gone through all this process, we've put ourselves in this position, the fact of the matter is, if we go back to where we were at two forty-three, that, that doesn't cut it, that, the, the bills, the water plan back in two thousand twelve, as, as Mayor Pro Tim Hildebrandt's talking about, I don't think they talked about twenty-five million dollars for stupid meters to be put in the ground, okay, that's twenty-five million dollars, someone said, pay them off, well, we still owe eighteen point five million dollars on those, what we're paying right now with what we're receiving on our water funds, if we go back to two dollars and forty-three cents for a thousand gallons, it ain't gonna cut it, and I don't want to talk about the past ninety-one-plus million dollars that had been spent by the former administration, but we are the ones who have to take care of that now, we have to look out for the future of Roswell, and if we're gonna look out for the future of Roswell, this deal right here, our infrastructure, Roswell has been notorious for, for deferring maintenance on everything, why did we have to build a new rec and aquatics facility for twenty-five-plus million dollars? Because we didn't take care of the Yucca Center, we didn't take care of, of Coon Park Pool, and wanted another thirty-five million dollars to build another public safety complex when they can't take care of what we have, our, 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 our heart and soul of this city is in the ground with our, with our, our sewer and our, and our plumbing for our water, that's what, that's what takes care of us on a daily basis, that's what helps us water the yards, what, we take a shower, we can flush the toilets and don't have to worry about things coming back up, back on Super Bowl Sunday, I don't know how many people in here know, that the power went down for about seven hours, the backup generator out there at the wastewater plant wasn't working, thankful that Bruce Gortney with J and G Electric got us back in running before everything was flowing back up into our houses, Super Bowl Sunday, how many people are having parties in their houses, flushing toilets, running sinks, doing everything else, we were popping sewer lids, uh, and it was, it was on our way back to our houses, okay? We have a lot of stuff that we have to take care of up here, I signed up for this because I care about Roswell, this is my hometown, this is where my family is, and I care about Roswell, and I don't want to talk about wages for police officers and everything else, my son is fixing to have to go back and, and have his leg re-broken, screws put in, everything else with the police department, he's a hero to me, but we have to be about Roswell, we have to be about our hometown, and if we have to increase this to three dollars and fifty cents for a thousand gallons, put our fair share in so we can start getting some money from the federal government, so we get money from the state government, and that's what we're gonna have to do, this is our hometown, it's a flat rate, commercial, residential, everything else, we own it, we made a big mistake because we got a, we got sold a bag of crap, and we're fixing it right now, and, 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 and I, and I, I know the bakers, they live next door to my parents, okay, and I love you guys, and I'm sorry that you guys are, your, your water rate has gone ridiculous, you live, you're in a house across the street from where my parents were, but we have to take care of our hometown, we have a great future here, but we have to own it, and, and I, and I personally own the mistake that we made in this tiered rate, ridiculous, never should have happened, and I appreciate all the work that Chad's done and all the other city counselors that have worked on this deal, but we have to take care of Roswell, and Mr. Mayor, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, I would just caution members to be careful on referring to other members' questions or statements, we can't represent, or, Councilman, Councilman Maruho, Carla?
Thank you, Mayor, first of all, I want to apologize to the citizens of Roswell, when we voted on this, we thought it was a good deal, turned out not to be a good deal, um, who to blame, we can blame everybody, we can blame counselors before, mayors before, we're here now, so we need to take care of this, and like I said, yes, they said they could replace us, it's fine, they could replace us, but then new counselors are gonna come into the same mess that we're in now. There's business owners here, there's pastors of churches here, my pastor was here earlier, they can't believe their bills, I mean, we're, we're in debt, our city's in debt, and if you're a business owner, how much can you be a million dollars in debt and try to run your business, you can't, so we're trying to fix this, and I'm asking for your patience, thank you for the respect you've given to us. The last thing we want is for the state to come and take over our city water, if they do that, then we're gonna be in a world hurt, so I'm asking, be patient, another thing is... So I'm asking, be patient. Another thing is. The university, they've, they've spent all their money on all their utilities already to do this last water bill. So we need to fix it. I have a friend lost seven yards cause his customers are not watering their yards anymore. So he's lost seven yards. So yes, we're gonna try and fix this. And we will get it done right. And I'm asking for your patience and your respect. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Maruho. Counselor Corn.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, gonna change focus. I'm sorry. Help me out here, Counselor. Okay, so I'm gonna change focus a little bit. I was wondering if Mr. Cole would be so kind to answer a few questions?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cole. You, you're familiar with our budget document?
Yes, sir.
Or you're not? Okay? So, is it fair? To say that our operating budget is over four million dollars for the water department?
Yes, sir.
Is it fair, uh, that the employees, uh, are paid three, a little over three and a half million dollars?
Yes, sir.
And our debt load on the water department is approximately two point three million dollars. So this year, in this budget document that you're very familiar with. That brings up the total cost of operation for the water department. Whatever, whatever it is, ten million. Fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight, hundred and eighty-three cents. Now, Mr. Yatima, would you answer a question for me? So. The bond series that paid for, there's two parts to this. Besides meters, it was a shut-off valve. We know we got a shut-off valve problem. We're changing them out. Um, we're the ones that, that are actually messing up. And you heard Chantel, if you were here last time.
The set valve.
Huh?
The set valve.
Yep. Uh, talk about the differences. But it was one bond, as I understand it. It was issued, it's bond series twenty seventeen. Um. January first seventeen. And it was, it, we still owe remaining payments. Of eighteen million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight twenty-five. And the rate increases about one percent over five years. Cause that's the deal that was made. So, my question to you, Mr. Yatima. Is, it was suggested that we pay this sucker off and go down.
It's one point five for wastewater.
And the debt for wastewater is presently a little over a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
And the good news is, in FY twenty-six, our debt service falls down to seven hundred and three thousand. Total due. Not payments, just total due. I don't, don't know if you've looked at that, but trust me, I have.
It's been a while. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, and in these calculations. We've, we got a good deal, hopefully. We'll see how it all unfolds. Uh, the reservoir rehab. We've got it booked in because it was a forty-five, fifty-five match. Okay? Of four million, four hundred thousand that we were gonna take out alone at a quarter percent. The good news is, the eight million we thought it was gonna cost. The bills have come in, they're going through the process. I think they're at the next city council meeting, if I recall correctly. Um, is about half that.
Yes, sir.
And. The problem with that is that nobody has been inside those tanks.
Correct.
So, we don't know. We just don't know. Whatever the amount is, it's still gonna be on a forty-five, fifty-five. Uh. Grant versus payment. So we're on the hook for fifty-five percent or whatever it costs. But I suspect there's gonna be some changeovers, what they're gonna mount to, I don't know. I am gone out there and gone swimming in them. Wouldn't know what I was looking at anyway. So, there are things that are happening. Mr. Cole, were you at the last finance committee meeting?
Yes, sir.
So you're aware of these two sheets that we got?
I am.
From the water department and the wastewater department. Where there are requests going into twenty-six. For the, uh. Wastewater. They're, they're gonna request, we haven't invented any of this stuff. Um. Three point seven million dollars. Let me highlight it one thing. The lift station replacement out at the old Air Force, now our airport. Is estimated to be over three million bucks. In the water department. It was four and a half million dollars. Capital project list. Three point nine of it is to put a thirty-six inch line, as I understand it, on North Montana where we've had all the breaks. It's an eight inch line. They wanna expand it to thirty-six is the plan. From nineteenth to stone. It's three point nine million dollars.